All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here in the chambers and all those around TV land. We appreciate you being here. We're going to start out with a motivational message and a prayer. And Pepe, BG?
Aye.
Aye. Come on up. Yeah, right there. And just face us. Yeah, because the 15 million people on TV will see your face there.
They're going to watch me, okay. Well, I really, I have given talks in many different settings, and this is really new. But I really appreciate the invite from council member, Councilman Kier Scopes. And it's different. And just as a way of introduction, so everybody knows who I am and what my background is, I am from Mexico. I moved to Utah about 24 years ago. And when I came here, I came with a dream, and I came with a dream to succeed and to fulfill my dreams. A few years later, I got married and I ended up in Spanish Fork. We were living in Provo, and when the market crashed, we had a rental here in Spanish Fork, and we thought that it was going to be a transitional home. And it's been about 13 years now since we are here. With that said, I wanted to say that because I really feel that Spanish Fork has welcomed me and my family as one of their own. We have had the opportunity to have a business here for a few years. It's closed now, but nothing because of the citizens of Spanish Fork. Everything else that has happened in the world. And there is a, when Kier mentioned that it was going to be a spiritual message, I really thought of what I could say. And the one scripture in the Bible came to mind when the Lord was talking to Abraham, it was in Abraham back then, in Genesis, where he told him that he needed to leave his country. And I'll read it. Now, the Lord had said unto Abraham, "Get thee out of thy country and from thy kindred and from thy father's house, unto a land that I will shoot thee." And on verse seven, on the same, Genesis 12, says, "And the Lord appeared unto Abraham and said, 'On to thy seed will I give this land.'" I really believe that the land of Spanish Fork is a land of opportunities, and it's a land for many of us that have chosen move out of the country, out of their own country, to come here and find a way to fulfill their dreams and to succeed. In the Book of Mormon, for all of those that are not members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, I am a member of this church. And in the Book of Mormon, there is scripture very similar to this one. And this one is a little bit more broad, but I would like to read it as well, just because to me, it is telling me that I am here for a reason, as well as we all here. In verse six of 2 Nephi 1 says, "Wherefore, I lihi," one of the prophets in the ancient Americas, "prophesy according to the workings of the Spirit, which is in me, that there shall none come into this land, save they shall be brought by the hand of the Lord." I really believe that I'm here for a purpose, I'm here for a reason, and I'm here to help and maybe volunteer and do what I can to make this city better. Spanish Fork has welcomed our family, and I believe that with the growth in the real estate market and a lot of the people coming here, many people have come from different races, colors, sexual orientation, and we are all mingling together. And we're here for a reason, because the hand of the Lord allowed us to come here. The scripture may be more broad than that, but I would like to apply it to this, just because all of us, when we work as one, then the community benefits. And I guess as a plea to the council members would be that, to work as one with the citizens, and that we can all support each other, because then that's where the utopia gets, right? Like where everybody's happy. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we are very thankful for the opportunity that we have here to meet at the City Council chambers and to have the opportunity to discuss the matters of the city of Spanish Fork. We are very grateful for the men and women that are serving the community and that are putting up his time and having their interests put aside, so that they can help each one of us, and we all can become one. We thank the Father for these many blessings, and we ask for, and I pray to be upon, the people of this meeting today, that we can counsel together, that everybody can be heard, and the decisions that need to be made will be made, thinking always that we'll benefit each other. We ask for thy help in this meeting today, and we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. I've asked Councilmember Beck to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Could the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, before we get to public comments, we'd like to invite some special people up. My lovely wife and a few of those other lovely wives and husband.
The lovely husband couldn't hear you.
All right.
Yeah, we're sorry that Chris got caught up in something he needed to take care of, and so did Rachel Gordon, so they're doing errands right now. But we're here because I don't think very many people understand or recognize the sacrifices that this council and this mayor make for this city. But we do. We know. And we want to express our deepest appreciation for Kier and Robin and their children and his parents and their grandchildren, for all the sacrifices that have been made as you've been in here, as you've worked hard, as you've put sometimes your family second to the city because it needed to happen, and your family was willing to sustain and support you in that effort. And now, as you go to serve our country as a true patriot, we want to just say thanks. And we have a little gift for you, Robin. We won't let her take it, though we'll let you take it.
I doubt if we'll make it home. Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, we've got another special group. Are they all here? All right, we'd like to have our new Miss Spanish Fork royalty come in. We just chose some new royalty, and we want them to come right up here in the front. So look at that good-looking crew. So what we want you to do is come up here and tell us who your name is and who your parents are. Each one of you, start with our Miss Spanish Fork, and you look at us, you know, because we're better-looking than those people.
I'm Paisley Healy, I'm Miss Spanish Fork, and my parents are Greg and Daria Healy.
Great.
I'm Aubrey Brower. I'm first attendant, and my parents are Mike and Jen Brower.
I'm Kayden Tuelen. I'm second attendant, and my parents are Rennie and Michelle Huelen.
I am Madison Anderson, and my parents are Jay Wyatt and Jamie Anderson.
Well, we're excited for this crew, because they get to represent Spanish Fork for the next year, get to come to all the events, and we will have events now. We'll get past this COVID, and we appreciate all the time and effort that you guys have put into this and make us look good when we're out there on the parades and every, all the events that we go to. So thank you and welcome. Want to come shake, take a single file, come shake our hands. Well, hey, right here, you need to get right here in front of the camera. There's our photo man, standing right here in front. We'll get a picture. Squeeze in.
Let's see if they can make you look good, Mayor. Here we go. Three, two, one.
Another chance.
Three, two, one. Got it. Thanks.
Flagpole, five minutes. Thank you. Going along with Miss Spanish Fork, we will be getting a new director. Racheling Talbot has, is that who's been doing, or who's?
Natasha.
Natasha has been doing it, and we appreciate you and all the effort you've put into this. So we have a new director, and I would like to appoint Jennifer Oldson as our new Miss Spanish Fork pageant director. And I understand she's going to keep Diane Anderson on with her. Is that correct?
Yes. She was on her way, she was still in the checkout line.
Okay.
She's the director of Girls' Count this week.
Ah, there you go.
She's a bit tardy.
There you go. So I need to...
She's only checking out a bit in capacity, but she's doing great job.
I move that we accept the mayor's nomination.
I second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. There she is. Everybody look at her. This is our new Miss Spanish Fork director, pageant director. That's normal.
I leave to Girls' Count tomorrow. What do I leave to Girls' Count tomorrow?
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You just got voted in. All right, thank you. We look for big things to happen in the future here. And thanks, girls, for being here. All right, let's move into public comments. Anyone that would like to come and address the mayor of the council, you're welcome to come up here, state your name, and you've got three minutes to bare your soul. Seeing none, let's move on to council comments. Oh, come on up here, you've got to be quick. We move right along here.
I've never been to one of these before.
That's all right.
All right. So...
Now, we do have some public carings. I don't know if you're here for one of the public carings or just want to generally...
Just a separate thing.
Okay.
I brought an executive summary to make it easier. Got my information summarized to help make an informed decision. So basically...
Whoa, you need to state your name.
All right, sure. My name's Russell Porter. I've lived in this area for, since I was a kid. My proposal was to try and benefit the city by changing the municipal code on ducks. Part of this is because there is coding for allowances for ducks, but the acre size, it requires a half an acre size lot, and most people, that's almost unheard of now. Since about 20 years ago, real estate direction had been going to smaller-sized lots, and we think this is good for people who have kids or who babysit kids. Also, since the LDS Church withdrew from the Boy Scouts, there is more need for home-based opportunities that would be unobtrusive and to help the youth. This also promotes skills and work and life skills for the youth as well. I also believe this would be low cost for the city's goals. When you're looking at proposals, most, most of the things that you would look at probably would cost a lot more money than this would. And this is contingent on that people who are involved in this would not keep anything that would make noise. I also did some research near the bottom on what would make noise and what wouldn't to help make an informed decision also, as well as there are benefits to this for people who garden, as these can be used for pest control, which also lowers the need for chemicals. That's pretty much it. The other information is stated on there, but basically Utah is growing so fast and property prices and development are going, Utah is basically the number three fastest-growing state in the Union right now. You can find this information, and it's verifiable on the internet, but generally for 2021, most polls put Utah at number three or number four for fastest-growing, and they put it even higher for per capita. So this means that there's more need for Utah to think, be innovative about how they meet growing needs. That's all. And I'll just, if anyone needs a copy of this, wants to look at it...
What's your first name? Sorry.
Russell.
Why don't you just leave it here with Tara, and we'll make sure that gets to the right department.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time bringing that up. Anyone else who'd like to come up and talk? Okay, now seeing none, let's move to council comments. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything at this time.
All right, Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, a few things to report. I had a couple garbage meetings and a water meeting to report on. Our South Utah Valley Solid Waste District meeting at the garbage, the spring cleanup was a success. We saw less tonnage than last year, which was ironic, but we got the tonnage in that we were able to haul away 447 tons of garbage from those 13 days. And just wanted to point out that Springville, they did their spring cleanup for six days. Mapleton does theirs for nine, and we did ours for 12. And so, just appreciate all the citizens doing, participating in that, helping clean up our community. We were able to pass a few resolutions, as well as our budget, and so all is well there as we move on to the new building of the new facility. I also wanted to make a mention of a city employee that is a dear friend of mine, who will technically call Friday his last day. Mr. Sterling Johnson is retiring as our sexton and has done a terrific job at our cemetery, keeping that beautiful. And so Sterling just wanted to publicly tell him and Christie how much I really appreciate their efforts and dedication and years of service working for Spanish Fork City. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chamber board meeting last week with, with the board members here in the city hall, and invited members to, to put their hat in the ring for the next election of board members coming up. I can't remember exactly when that happens.
I think it's in October.
So, so you just start putting in for it. If you're a business owner that's not a member of the chamber, become a member of the chamber and, and put your, your name in the hat to run for the board, too. It's a, it's a good group of business owners and people that like to volunteer, do good things for the community, and, and those, those vacancies will be coming up in, on the chamber board. So some cool things coming up. Obviously, it's always a busy season for business in Spanish Fork, but the day after the carnival happens, the, they pick right up with the farmer's market that the chamber helps us with. It's, this will be under construction here, so where it usually is, you'll see a lot of advertisements to get you down Center Street to the, to the place where it'll be in front of the Justice Center this year. Appreciate Councilman Gordon, Gordon's are a big part of the farmer's market, along with other, other good people from all over the county that come to it. But, but we'll make a good go of it down in that space and, and then see what, what locations are offered to us the year after that. So good things happening in the Chamber of Commerce. The other active and healthy Fit City Minute, I guess, that I would have this week, this council meeting, number one, received an email from Bronco Hunter in our Parks and Rec Department today that talks, sent it to Susan Chapman and I about the Get Healthy Utah Initiative that really, if you read what their initiative is, it really is something that simply is taken after what we started in, in Spanish Fork about four or five years ago. Just one line from it, really quick, of, of the applications that are going to be open for it, that says, "In 2020, our partners at Get Healthy Utah and the Utah League of Cities and Towns announced a new designation program for cities and towns, Healthy Utah Community. This program is designed to highlight the work being done in communities throughout Utah to support and improve the health of residents." Goes on in the, in the next paragraphs to talk about how to, how to apply as cities. So I'm really proud of what this movement has turned into. It's, it's, it's spread over the state and cities all up and down our state, all 249, in some way are more, more in tune with the physical health and the mental health of their communities. And it's, it's because we decided to get involved and maybe do some things that, that weren't generally local government stuff. So it's, it's just good to see that this is still spreading far and wide across the state, and I'm excited to see the applicants and what good things will continue to come out of cities. Nick had it up, but one of the cool things that has come from our Fit City movement has been the Active and Healthy Fair. COVID messed it up, like just about everything, Mayor, but, so, so we didn't, we didn't have it last year, but we are having it this year. It is this Saturday down at the sports park, and it is a fun, fun event. 10:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. What time you got to be there to, a fun run? That doesn't, they call it a fun run, but what is fun about running? I haven't found it yet.
Yeah, how long is that?
It's a short one.
And do we have to run to get a shirt? Can we just buy a shirt? In the run?
Get a participation trophy.
Can we just show up to the fair and get a shirt?
She's trying to pay. She's trying to just buy one.
The first 500, the first 500.
First 500. So first 500 to show up.
So you can just go. You don't have to walk or run.
We're walking and running.
Okay.
All of us. It's a great t-shirt. It's a cool t-shirt every year. I'm excited for this year as well. I think everybody is a little cagey still, wants to get out. Nick has ordered better weather than 104 degrees, whatever it is out there today.
We ordered it.
Okay. So it's at 10:00 a.m., it shouldn't be that bad. There's plenty of shade. You can see all the vendors that show up. There's fun stuff for the kids, and it's in just one of the prettiest parts of our city, and, and just all the events that go on. And so come down and, and join us and join the rest of your community with lots of prizes, lots of giveaways. Did you take this picture, Seth? Seth always gets up on a ladder and, and throws stuff, so you can come catch a lot of things. But it's really cool to see families kind of enter into the summer with, with some cool stuff. Kayaks, you know, paddleboards, just, just some cool stuff that we have drawings for that, that get people out and more active and healthy with their families. So make sure to come and join us if you don't have anything going on Saturday. Even if you do, come for a minute and, and get a t-shirt and hang out with us. It's going to be fun. The other part of my Active and Healthy Minute is I brought some, some guests that we're coming up on a year now of, of our ribbon cutting at the All Abilities Park, Adventure Heights All Abilities Park. If you haven't been up there, you're missing out. A whole lot of the community has been up there, and Lofi Inoki has, has agreed to come today to, to just remind us how important this amenity is to her and her family, her daughter Sabrina, and, and everybody else. And so we've invited her here tonight to, to remind us how key this is for, for her and her family, but for everybody else as, as well, that, that enjoys this park and, and this is a community. So we'd invite her and her two sons, yes, those two handsome sons, tell them to come on up, too, and we're, we're glad that you're here tonight.
Thank you. That made me want to cry. But yes, but I want to thank you, Councilmember Mike Mendenhall, and council members for having me today. Again, my name is Lofi Inoki, and I am a mother of five children, four boys and Sabrina. My daughter Sabrina Inoki is seven years old and is the light, love, and purpose of our family. Sabrina has a rare brain disorder called CDKL5. CDKL5 limits the development of Sabrina's brain. Sabrina has seizures regularly. She's unable to speak or walk. She eats through a feeding tube and is unable to independently do things on her own. An amazing organization here in Utah is hosting an event, Children and the Earth. The event is called Ride the Brain Wave 2021 on June 26th to help pay for medical bills, therapy, and, and a couple funerals for children with different physical abilities, immune needs, who are struggling and fighting. We would love if you could join us in person or virtually, join Team Sabrina when registering at Eventbrite.com. This month is extra special to our family because it is CDKL5 Awareness Month. Thursday, June 17th is CDKL5 Awareness Day. I don't expect any of you to know what this is, and that's why I'm here, to educate you on my daughter's disorder. I hope not to educate you on her disorder, but more to bring more understanding to who my daughter is, which is one of the hundreds of children here in our community with special needs. I wanted to take this opportunity to remind the community how important Adventure Heights All Ability Park is to our family, Sabrina, and the differently-abled people of Spanish Fork. This park is the only park here in Spanish Fork that all my children can play together. Sabrina is very lucky to have this park, and we should do our best to take care of it. Please remember that the equipment throughout the play area, the splash pad, are a part of the only local park hundreds of local children, like Sabrina, can enjoy. Thank you to the generous family, the city, the residents, for making this dream a reality. It has provided so much enjoyment for our family. Going into the summer, I'd like to remind everyone to please, please, take care of this job in our community. Please remember why the majority of the futures are there. If you see anyone damaging the equipment, please alert someone. So much love and planning went into this park by parents and loved ones, so that every kid with different abilities had a park that they could play in. After the grand opening, I met so many parents who have lost their kids to so many different illnesses, how they wish to have had a place like this that their family can enjoy. The last couple of nights, I've spent with my daughter in the hospital, my husband and I, and I told Sabrina last night, when she's 100% better, that I will take her to her favorite park. It breaks my heart to see people not take care of this special park. This is too important of a place to let it be damaged or diminished by anyone. Enjoy your summer, be safe, and remember that Adventure Heights All Ability Park is a place for all of us, but is also the only place for some of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
We have a couple of things that we want to give these young...
Oh, gosh.
... in the corner, if you grab those bags. We've got some stuff. You guys are kind of the, the best that represent Spanish Fork. And, and so there's some cool stuff in there that you guys and your sister can, can have and show off at Adventure Heights. Your family is awesome. Your mom and dad are awesome, and this is a great place to, to not only live, but a great place to, to play and recreate. So thank you for your important month that you're a part of. We'll, we're going to share that event out on our Active and Healthy Facebook page. So June 26th, make sure to remember their sister, her daughter, Team Sabrina, in this event, and we appreciate you so much for all you do for Spanish Fork.
Can we get a picture?
Please, yes.
For her Awareness Month, we just hold our hands up for CDKL5. Can we get one?
Yep, we'll take it. He'll send it to you.
We got our official for time for that.
Oh, thank you.
You know, you didn't know you had to take pictures to get the bags, did you?
It's part of the deal. All right, let's get yourself...
Okay, so hold up the number five.
Yes.
Did you do a one-handed, Tyler?
Three, two, one, you bet. Three, two, one. And, two, one. All right.
All right, Councilmember Beck.
I have a couple things. This past week was Miss Utah. Many of you know that Dejana Talbot served as Miss Utah for two years because of COVID, and so she just transferred her crown and sash to a new Miss Utah. But the cool thing about Miss Utah last week was that we had three young women representing Spanish Fork in some roundabout way, because a lot of places didn't have pageants last year. We had, last year's Miss Spanish Fork 2020, Azure Ray Talbot, and then the year before that, 2019, Morgan Reed, and the year before that, Morgan Olson, who was serving as Miss Dixie State. So Morgan Olson received an award. Azure Ray Talbot made it to the... So Morgan Olson received an award, Azure Ray Talbot made it to the top 12. So we had super representation of Spanish Fork at Miss Utah last week. So I just wanna thank those girls and congratulate them. And then Fiesta Days, next city council meeting, we will do our big yee-haw with our cowboy hats and boots and all. We are super excited about that. Everything is up and going, the magazine is getting finalized. If you have any questions, you can hop online, SpanishFork.org, look over the Fiesta Days things. A couple maybe weeks ago, back in May, I reached out to the community and our executive committee has been reaching out to businesses and, and residents, just saying the Pyro Musical that had been put on by one of our volunteers in our community, they have given it to the city. This event will cost the city about $25,000 to $30,000. This is one event that people from all over Utah County come to and it's free. And we really were debating, do we have to have fi, two fireworks shows? Do we have Pyro Musical and our 24th of July fireworks? Well, all said and done, we raised $21,000 in sponsorships. And I just wanna thank the businesses that have done that and our committee that has done that. Mike Clayson with Pacific.
Horizon.
Horizon. They are the major sponsor, $6,000. We have a lot of people step up, so we are able to do that and I just wanna thank them. Another thing, rodeo tickets. Get online, get those now because you know we will sell out by the time the rodeo comes. And one event that we're really working to grow again is the Children's Parade. So if you are working with your youth, either in church or different organizations or a class or anything here in Spanish Fork, you can hop online, fill out the application. On July 17th, there will be a Children's Parade and we would love to see that event grow. Free popsicles for all the kids and I think the carnival will also be donating tickets to the kids there. So, and last but not least, I just wanna thank those people who have put their hat in the ring to run for mayor or city council. It's going to be an exciting next five months and I look forward to getting to know those people and just thank them for being willing to serve. I think it's super important and, and best of luck to everyone who is involving themselves in that. Oh, before I stop, I wanna tell Kier how much I've loved serving with him because I think he's gonna be next.
You think?
Oh, is that later? Oh, Brandon's mouthing later. Brandon, when can I talk to that Kier?
Stacy, you can do anything you want. Don't listen to, don't listen to, yeah. So if you wanna say it, go right ahead.
Thanks, Mayor.
Say it twice.
No, I just, it's been a pure joy getting to know Kier. The first time I ever met him was actually during Fiesta Days and I don't know if you remember that. It was when I was campaigning back, back in 2015 and he came up and he's like, hey, are you Stacy, I'm like, Kier? And we sat and talked, that was the first time we'd met and, and now I consider you a dear friend. I think his heart is so big. He loves people. He loves to serve. And we know that because he's serving his family, his community here in Spanish Fork and also his country. And I don't wanna sit up here and cry, but Kier, I love you, I love your family. Thank you for sharing him with us and with our country as a whole, because that's a big sacrifice for you all. It's been fun. That's all.
All right, well, I'll give Kier a minute to compose himself after this. As most of you know, Kier announced his resignation as a city councilman last, this will be his last meeting. He's gonna service in Washington DC with, with the military and that service is gonna take him away from the city here for a little while and we really appreciate him. So before we get in everybody crying, Kier, it's all yours.
All right, uh, let's see. Mayor, on Thursday at 7:30 in the morning is the Utah Lake Commission meeting. I won't be there.
Okay, thank you for letting me know that.
I think legally.
That's Stacy, since Stacy spoke up, she can go.
I was gonna say you can go since you told me to not speak up.
Just saying.
I think legally I won't be allowed to go, so. Just so you're tracking on that. I'll try to be as, as short-winded as I can. If you ask my wife, I very rarely get nervous. They've been in a lot of situations that are, that are happy, sad and in between and I just don't get too nervous and I am right now. I think it's important, before I go in, and I, I prepared, prepared just a few remarks to keep me on track and to make sure our meeting stays on track, because this city's far greater than any one person. So in 1997, my wife and I, our family, we moved to Utah to attend BYU and had the great fortune of getting to know some Spanish Fork residents that lived in the fourplex that we lived in. And as we got to know them, members of the Gold family, Aaron had come up to me and had said, well, you're fairly tall, do you play basketball? I said, well, yes, I absolutely love to. And he said, great, we have a, we have a great Parks and Rec department in the town I grew up in. I said, wonderful, what's that and where's that? And we came down and played. So I'm a, I am a result, a direct result of the Parks and Rec Department. And I'm very happy to say, happy to say that I am. Came down, played basketball in, in our Parks and Rec Department and the basketball teams. Later, after we graduated from BYU, as, as older college students, we moved, we moved to Spanish Fork in the end of 2002. Later to be deployed to Iraq in 2003 and 2004, returning home and then serving again in Afghanistan in '08 and '09. Only to receive, man, it still chokes me up. To receive a parade honoring those soldiers that I had served with and sheepishly myself for our service to the country in a fire engine parade down, down Main Street. Something I'm grateful our community does for the veterans, the sports teams, the welding teams, the FFA, the anybody else from Spanish Fork that has the opportunity to excel in something. And we, I can tell you that the council, city staff, city employees are, are happy and grateful to be able to recognize the, the great accomplishments of the members of our community. After, after all that hoopla, I decided and had asked a number of times, how do I give back? And through a series of events was pointed in the direction of, of politics, which I scoffed at, but found that it was an opportunity to be able to give back in a very meaningful way. Despite my years of service in Spanish Fork City, in public service, Mayor, I have to report that I'm sorry to say that I am still indebted to Spanish Fork City. As in these, in this over a decade of service, I have gained friends, family and home. I am proud to represent the state of Utah and the city of Spanish Fork at the National War College in Washington DC for the next year. So there's some background. As I look down at the notes, it's not because I don't want to be personable, but it'll help me get through and keep from, keep from losing my composure. In the 19 years that we've lived in Spanish Fork, and I feel like a teenager when I, when I talk about living in Spanish Fork, because I tell people I've lived here 20 years, it's like the teenager that's 15 and says, well, I'm all, I'm 16. And they're 15 and a half or 15 and eight months. I've lived here 20 years because I'm proud to say that I, I live here and I'm from here. But in the 19 years we've lived here, I've been in service, in public service to this city almost 12 years exactly, just a few months short of that. Nearly two-thirds of my Spanish Fork life, so to speak, has been in service to this community. As a councilman, I'm very grateful, tremendously grateful for that opportunity. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my family. My wife, Robin, for her support and letting me do something that I have found that I truly enjoy, service and learning how municipal government works. It's absolutely amazing. Sometimes slow and sometimes frustrating because as citizens, we don't quite understand how the wheels spin and how the cogs mesh. But it's a wonderful opportunity if you ever get the chance to serve. To my daughters, Amber, Jessica, Ashley, and my son Trevor. My son-in-law Will and my, my grandson Riley, for the phone calls that have taken precedent, the emails, the meetings and things that have, that have at times seemed more important than they are. In the moment, it was a need to take care of, but it certainly was never more important than you. To my employer, Nevo School District, I'm grateful for the opportunity that they have allowed me to be able to serve in this capacity. As a, as an educator, to be able to be a living example of the legislative process, to be able to teach my students how our system of government works and that anyone in any level of that government can serve simply by putting their name on a, on a, on a candidate sheet. And then having a, a sincere desire to serve with all of your heart, mind and strength. To the candidates that are going through that process now, I congratulate you for taking that step. And if your desires are not to serve and love the people of Spanish Fork, I would suggest you're not doing it for the right reasons. But I'm grateful that you've signed a dotted line and look forward to those things that you will be doing and, and achieving. I'm grateful to the Utah Army National Guard, for which I've been a member for 24 years and counting. Grateful to, to my commander, Major General Turley, for his and the other officers appointed over me for their mentorship and the opportunity that they have given me as, as an officer in the Army, to be able to be a citizen soldier, which is what the National Guard is all about, being a citizen soldier. Serving those in our community, for those that aren't aware, the National Guard, though we have an Army and Air Force, we belong to the governor of the state of Utah. That is our commander in chief. We do also have a commander in chief, which is the president of our great country. But as it works, the president has to ask the governor to use his soldiers. And in both Iraq and Afghanistan, the governor at the time said, yes, you can use our soldiers, but please return them with care. And so I'm grateful for General Turley and for the opportunity I have to be a citizen sho, a citizen soldier on many, on many accounts. To city staff. Boy, this is getting harder.
I can tell.
Man.
You'll be fine. These guys will be here all night long, it doesn't matter.
I apologize. To city staff and employees, I cannot thank you enough for your work ethic, your time and your efforts that have gone above and beyond your pay grade, have gone above and beyond the dollars, cents and benefits that you receive as members and as employees working for this great city. Personally, that is one of the things that I will miss the most is my association with each of you as friends. Thank you again for the things you do for us as citizens that go unnoticed and the time and effort you take to simply get it right with the knowledge and the information we have at, at hand. To the mayors and councils, I've appreciated serving with each of you over these years and more particularly to this mayor and this council. I have truly appreciated sharing this time of service with you and more importantly, your friendship and I consider you family. I am very grateful for the opportunity to be able to rub, rub shoulders with you and serve at this time. And last, but certainly, certainly not least, to the citizens of Spanish Fork. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. As someone not born and raised in Spanish Fork, I honestly did not think I had a chance to be elected. And yet, as I talked with my fifth graders, which was the grade I was teaching at the time, I taught them, well, hey, anybody can do it, so why not me? And surprise, surprise, I got elected. But at this time, to my fellow citizens, I'd like to give you an accountability report. In three terms, as an elected official for Spanish Fork City, I have seen the affairs of this city run with prudence and integrity. I have observed city employees do their best to be able to, I have observed city employees do their best to be able to provide the needs of us as citizens, both day and night. I have seen them properly use city resources and the discharge of their duties. I have seen elected officials conduct themselves with selfless service and personal courage to make decisions at times unpopular for certain members of our community, but for the benefit of the entire city, not beholding to any one neighborhood, group of per, group of people or lobbying power. I have seen them serve with honor and integrity. I have, I have seen our taxpayer funds used with complete discretion, trying to find the best ways to serve and put them to good use in, in improving our infrastructure, our way of life in this place that for whatever period of time you are here, we call home. I thank you all for this opportunity to serve. Mayor, this is my report.
Well, we appreciate Kier so much and we could go on and on and say everything. I've had the opportunity to work with Kier for over 12 years, so it's been awesome. It's been an honor calling my friend. And each one of us have the same feeling that he's a family member. It's like we're sending you off on a mission, you know? So we know you're coming back, but we're glad you're going and we're gonna miss you and make sure you represent Spanish Fork back there in Washington for us. So thank you so much. All right, now let's get moving on here. Spanish Fork 101. Readers Digest Version.
I didn't know I was gonna have to follow that. I'm excited to announce this evening, Spanish Fork University and Class 101. This is an opportunity for residents to get to know really the inner workings of the city and we hope to do this, this many times over. So I just wanna briefly kind of announce this program and, and what it is. So it's a 10-week class that is both fun and informative and very interactive to provide a behind-the-scenes look at Spanish Fork City and the things that each different department does, their kind of guiding principles and, and also to provide participants with this primary knowledge of what the city does and how, how it works, what its operations are. It's a big organization with a $170 million budget, so what, what is it that, that the city does on a daily basis? So our 10-week lineup, and this is subject to change, but it's a chance to, to visit with and get to know each department from administration, library, a couple nights with public works, community development, our Spanish Fork Community Network and the things that they do, airport and engineering, fire, EMS and then police and Parks and Rec. So there's a whole lot. So, there's a whole lot more than 10 weeks' worth of material that, that's put into this, but this is kind of a, a wide swath of what the city does and, and who we are. So the inaugural class will start on August 25th. 10 weeks will run through October 27th. We're thinking a class size of about 12. That's, it's not a lot, but as we get this program going, hopefully semi-annually, we'll have a chance to, to get many more people involved. So our priority is, is Spanish Fork residents. Right now, that program will only be open to them. Will start August 25th, that's a Wednesday, and we'll meet Wednesday weekly for two hours from 6:30 to 8:30. Like the lineup said, we have various locations, we'll meet at topics, various facilities and things to see. And so, that first Monday in July, July 6th, we'll open that sign-ups. It'll be a first-come, first-served basis and gets you into this course. And it'll be a free course. There'll be some, some swag and things that, it'll be worth your time as residents join and, and come and join us for Spanish Fork University 101. Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that, Nick. All right, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Mayor, I'll second that with the recusal from item E.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall with his amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go to public hearing. Escala Town Home Zone Change. Dave, you gonna take that?
Yes, sir, thank you. And if you're comfortable with it, the first new business item is, is connected with the first public hearing item. Some of you go ahead and introduce those two together and the council can do whatever they'd care to in terms of making motions on those. The, the proposed zone change has to do with some property on Del Monte Road, just a little bit north of the intersection of Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail. So I think everybody was on the council when a storage unit project was approved just a couple of years ago. It's been, that was through the approval process a couple of different times. This property is adjacent to that site, just to the north between that storage unit site and the M A T C facility. Nick, do you mind maybe helping out there? Next slide? So, sorry, I'll maybe grab the remote here in a second, but, so that's the subject property. The proposed zone change would take the zoning from rural residential, hey, thank you, to residential 3R3. And when we talk about zone changes, we often talk about the city's general plan, which is kind of a blueprint for zoning. It's a guide that most of the time gets followed when questions like this are placed before the city council. In the case of this property, the general plan was amended just a few months ago, for several years before that time. The general plan designation for this property and some properties in the vicinity was mixed use, which would have allowed for a number of different non-residential uses, as well as residential development up to a particular number of homes on an acre. And with the change that was made, the general plan now would exclusively designate the property for just residential zoning districts and set a ceiling on the density that a development should have at eight homes per acre. So that eight-home-per-acre limit, in fact, has been the topic of quite a bit of discussion that we as staff have had with the applicant. It was also that way with the applicant and the planning commission. But the R3 zone as proposed, provided that the development does not exceed that eight-unit-to-the-acre ceiling or maximum, is consistent with the general plan. And as much as that's the case, we as staff and the planning commission as well have recommended that the proposed zone change to R3 be approved. Now that being said, I really don't think that's necessarily the main event, really, I think much more so, it's the proposed development. So along with that tonight, we have a proposed preliminary plat that includes, like you can see here, a combination of, combination of some single-family lots, which abut the Old Mill Estates development, which is to the west of the subject property, and then a number of townhomes between those lots and Del Monte Road over here. Just as a matter of perspective, this is something that the, the planning commission, I think, appreciated. The density that we see here on this part of the project is just over actually nine units to the acre, if you just focus in on, on the townhome area. Overall, the density of the development is just under eight units to the acre, again, that being the maximum, and that's why, at least in part, staff's comfortable with what's proposed now, believing that it's consistent with the general plan. But this particular density essentially matches what was approved with the Del Monte Town Homes Arrives Development that was approved last year, just on the other side of M A T C, also along Del Monte Road. That project's about half the size of this with 54 homes. Altogether, this would have 108 as proposed, 10 lots for single-family homes, 98 townhomes. And I guess I'll, I'll go to this part and kind of backfill a little bit. As proposed, with the conditions that you can see in the staff report, which I understand the applicant is prepared to meet, again, the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both have recommended that the proposed master plan development for the Escala Town Homes be approved. That being said, I think there are some issues that, that I should get out on the table. We've had a number of conversations, both leading up to public hearings with neighbors in the area, as well as certainly had a lot of comment during a couple of different planning commissions where the, planning commission meetings where this was reviewed. As is often the case, concerns were raised just about the overall density of the, the proposed development, concerns about the type of housing with townhomes, whether that's consistent, particularly with the development to the east or not. Traffic in a number of different respects was expressed as a concern. And relative to that, there was one, one item in particular with the development of the neighborhood to the west, again, Old Mill Estates. There is a street right here that currently dead ends at the property line. It was certainly intended that it would connect to whatever developed between that project and Del Monte Road. And we've had a number of neighbors in the Old Mill Estates development that have expressed considerable concern about that street connecting and, and how that might adversely impact their neighborhood in terms of traffic and that sort of a thing. And, you know, relative to any of those concerns, I certainly don't wanna downplay them to any degree. However, I guess also to be candid, we hear those types of concerns fairly regularly when we're talking about a development, maybe that, that does have a different type of housing than what you might find in an adjacent subdivision or neighborhood. We hear also the concerns even when the housing type's the same, relative to increases in traffic and that type of a thing. And we really do not have much experience as a community in seeing over the long haul that, for example, connecting local streets like this one here does indeed create any type of a, a negative impact on an adjacent neighborhood. I've said things like this before, so I'll repeat it, I guess, again. To the contrary, I think particularly if we look at the parts of the community that were developed in the, in the 80s and the 90s, I think primarily, what I would call the east bench, we have a number of neighborhoods where the street connectivity is really quite poor. And it's not uncommon to have to drive a mile, you know, conceivably to go just a few hundred feet because there is an absence of things like this. And particularly when, when those types of vehicular trips involve getting out onto roads like Collector Road here and arterial road like Arrowhead Trail, back onto a Collector Road and roads where you're dealing with intersections where travel speeds are very, very distinct, you know, some vehicles going 60 miles an hour, others, you know, coming from a dead stop and that type of a thing. Opportunities to avoid those types of movements, you know, for just really inter-neighborhood types of trips, for whatever it's worth, we as staff, I think those are very healthy things to, to connect and to create local street networks that facilitate just that type of, of ability for people to, to navigate. Again, in kind of an inter-neighborhood fashion, but with the understanding that, that that connection is a concern, we have made an effort working with the applicant, and we appreciate them working with us to try to discourage as much as I think we possibly could. Traffic that is on Del Monte Road, that is maybe a trip that doesn't originate in what would be this neighborhood here, or traffic maybe that's on Mill Road, using the route through this neighborhood and Old Mill Estates to get either to or from Mill Road and Del Monte Road, or vice versa, a cut-through, if you will. So, there are a number of different things about the, the design. That image doesn't show up very well. This one maybe does a little bit better. And then kind of picture what we were just looking at, which is a fairly circuitous kind of street design that's proposed for the townhome development and how that would tie into likewise a pretty circuitous design that exists with Old Mill Estates. We do not believe that there is gonna be a lot of cut-through traffic that's not at least, you know, in our neighborhood. To further discourage that, we kind of have a traffic calming, traffic discouraging device here, sort of on steroids there, that, you know, again, is gonna, gonna cause people in a fairly forceful way to really, really reduce the travel speed and, and, you know, I think for purposes of convenience, probably avoid, you know, maybe the route that I just described for convenience sake. But, you know, we certainly, again, we acknowledge that those things are, are concerns. In fact, I'd even note that one suggestion that's been made would be to not have this, this connection happen for vehicular traffic, but maybe just for pedestrian traffic. We certainly have those types of connections around the community. I think those have merit certainly, but at the same time, in as much as this would allow for both vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic in a safe way, we as staff have pretty consistently recommended that that be part of the, part of the development and part of whatever is approved. So, again, that being said, relative to both the proposed zone change and the proposed master plan development, staff recommends that they be approved based on the findings that are provided in, in the staff reports for both of those two items and subject to the conditions that we have there as well.
Okay. All right, we'll go into, do a public hearing first. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are in a public hearing. Anyone that would like to come and talk about this zone change, welcome to come up here. Please state your name and you get three minutes. And if there's a lot of you, please don't repeat the same thing, you know, because we can, we get it. So if you've got different things to say, perfect, but you're welcome to come on up and we'd love to hear from you.
My name is Mike Conde. I live at the corner of Wheatfield and 1460 South. I'm right across the street from this subject property. And maybe I'd like to start my comments by this statement. What is the purpose of zoning? Purpose of zoning is to protect all property owners, not one property owner at the expense of someone else, their neighbor. So when you keep that, that idea in mind, I'd like to revert back to the connection between the subdivision and the Estella property. I happen to live right across the street from us, from this, and, and I am really concerned about three things. Traffic, safety, and parking. If you look at the plat, you're gonna find that there's not much parking in that, in that, in that subdivision. I'm primarily concerned about trucks, trailers, campers, boats. There's no place to park them. And even if you read their, their CCNRs, they preclude the opportunity to park them there. They have to park somewhere else. Wherever they're gonna go, they're gonna find their way to a neighborhood. And myself, I, I don't want that. My neighbors don't want that. And, you know, I understand that the Tingies have the right to develop their property. I am not opposed to their development. What I am opposed to is the connection. And, you know, I've been around a long time, and I have found that my experience is, try to find a way that you can mediate and find a middle ground. And as I look at the project, I can't see a reason why that connection should be made. There's more negative things than positive things. And if you just eliminate that, those negative things kind of disappear. You don't have to worry about the traffic, you don't have to worry about the parking. And it doesn't negatively, it doesn't, the, it doesn't negatively affect the values of our properties. And that's a real concern when you try to mix uses. And, you know, honestly, we've spent our life putting this together. And we, we chose this property. We chose you, you didn't choose us. And we like what we have, and we don't want to see what we have diminished. And myself, I think that's a, that's an easy compromise, just to, just eliminate that road.
Great. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike. Mike?
Jason Rasmussen. Precedence is a word that was used a lot in our last discussions on developments, and it brought us a lot of concern because we knew the precedence was gonna be set. And as you can see, we're here today fighting against townhomes in our, in our neighborhood that are a little frustrating to us. And knowing this was gonna happen, we did work with Cody and the Tingies to try to come up with an option, and we really appreciate their, their dialogue with them, putting those homes in there and working with us. But even with that, we still have some concerns with our kids' safety, with parking and traffic issues. And part of that reason is, is that last development, we were told that the development would fix some of those issues. The problem with that is we weren't explained how they would fix them, so a lot of our neighbors came out frustrated and understanding what was gonna change. And instead, even in the meeting, we had a council member decide to focus on a couple poorly-written emails instead of the dozens of well-written emails voicing concerns from the citizens in our neighborhood. And even when it came to the vote, there was council members that chose to remain silent and not explain why they were voting the way they were. And so that becomes a little frustrating to members in the community, not understanding, you know, what they're getting and why something's voting in. And so as we've pushed back on that, it even came to where we felt that we were negatively looked at and even called a mob for doing what we were doing, when we really care about our neighborhood. With all that being said, I, I want a suggestion that I've tried to come up with, trying to fix some of these issues. In townhomes, you guys allow for two and a quarter parking spaces per unit, but you get to count garages in those. I'm sure all of you know, as you go to townhome developments and you drive around, garages turn into storage. And that two and a quarter now goes to one and a quarter or even a quarter of parking spaces when you look at those townhomes. So I would highly encourage that that be changed, that you don't allow garage spaces to be counted in high-density townhomes, especially in one like these where you have townhomes that don't even have driving, driveways. Their only parking is their garage. So if they turn that into storage, there's nothing you can do about it, and now you have serious parking issues of what Mike talked about coming down into our neighborhood. And so I'd encourage you to take a look at that and maybe make that adjustment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, also...
I'd also like to add, ask if my statement can be put in the minutes of the meeting.
Every, every statement is in the minutes.
I thought they just put the name, do they actually put the words in?
It's being recorded, so it's all, it's all being recorded and filmed. Anyone else?
Hey, my name's Matt Goble. I grew up in Spanish Fork. I know Chad, I've known Mike, I know Mike's dad really well, Brandon, I've known Brandon for a little while. And I live, let's see, I'm on the middle of fifteen fifty South, six hundred West, where it comes to the home right there in the corner. I have a special needs kid. I mean, I don't know if you guys take that into account, but I do. And it's rough to find an area where, sorry. It's rough to find an area that he could go in and play. And with the roads, you guys, I mean, he came and said, let me, I wrote it down because I thought it was a ludicrous statement. So he says, "We do not believe that there will be much cut through traffic." What kind of comment is that? There's not going to be much cut through traffic? I mean, what kind of joke? Old, Old, or Del Monte is a small road. There's not a lot of cars that can fit on that road. You get ninety-seven townhomes, a hundred and eight or whatever it was, new homes in that area, it's going to be absolutely insane. And they're all not going to turn right and go to the light, they're going to come through right there, through, down to, down to Old Mill, through my neighborhood where my kid plays, and I'm not going to deal with it. Okay? It's an absolute joke that the city is even considering townhomes here. I don't know what happened to Spanish Fork and why we have so many townhomes going in everywhere. It's absolutely nuts. And I understand you guys are doing what you do, but I have a special needs kid that I need to worry about, and if that road comes into my neighborhood, it puts him at risk, especially because he rides a scooter from the cul-de-sac to the end of Wheatfield Lane all the time. He goes back and forth, and he has it in his mind that he stops at Wheatfield Lane, turns around, and goes back and forth. Everybody in my neighborhood has seen this. I mean, he goes through around the block, that's what he does. It's, it's what's, what he's, his pattern is during the day. And if you guys do this, this is the reason we chose to live in this area, is because it was a big lot. We didn't expect a bunch of crap to be put in here, a bunch of palms to increase traffic, increase crime, increase a whole bunch of other stuff. And I get that, you know, Spanish Fork's trying to bring people here. I don't know why we can't be small. I've never understood why we can't be a small town. I love small, I loved Spanish Fork when it was small. I grew up on Mitchell Drive. I mean, and so I've, like I said, Chad was in my ward growing up, his wife Teresa worked with my kid, Chad knows my family. I just don't think that it's necessary. If they want to develop the land, put a developments there that's in perspective, that's a priority for the, the whole city, and that's not going to be disproportionate to everything, because that's what's going on right now. And I appreciate your time, and I appreciate what you guys do, but I want you to consider this type of thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Come on up.
I just wanted to offer a quick.
But state your name again.
Russell Porter. It looks like, you know, you, everybody's worried about this one easement, but maybe it might solve more, more problems and offer an alternative by having a second easement road somewhere else on another side to draw traffic away, because the, the development's going to be here. And I'm not either for or against either one, but it might be an idea that might could help both parties without being combative. And then just the other thing, I've known a lot of people who live in townhomes, and frequently there is nothing that stops them from doubling or tripling the HOA fees within ten years of people living in those. And that's a problem.
I'm the lucky one that lives right at the end of Wheatfield Lane that we're talking about here. Mike Conde probably said it best, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time repeating what he said. I echo a hundred percent what he had said. I didn't intend also to back up Matt Goble, but it's a team effort for his boy, hundred percent. If, if you knew the background there, we're all very attentive of what he's doing and making sure that he's safe. One thing that probably hasn't been addressed is Wheatfield Lane does have a bit of a grade. It's used pretty heavily by the neighborhood kids going down on scooters. I look at that normally as a safety concern, but I also look at it as a, an excellent way for people to speed. So it's just cite, again, citing another safety concern that we have. I also want to make it clear, I'm pro-development. I, I, we did not buy that house naively, knowing that there wasn't going to be any sort of development that was going to happen. We knew it. We purchased that home, knowing that that was going to go on, but what we didn't know was the mass density that's going there. And to this day, I still have not had a good response or had anybody explain to me why that needs to open up the entire neighborhood. There's already two exits that, that funnel out into Del Monte Road. To me, I think that's, that serves its purpose, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
My name is Derek Gustafson. I'm also a candidate for mayor. Wanted to point out a couple things. A counterargument was brought up that we don't have a lot of experience with high-density neighborhoods flooding into lower-density neighborhoods in Spanish Fork. I see that as a very poor excuse for making this a testing grounds. I'd say we have actually a very relevant and close example, and that's in Vineyard. If you've ever been to Vineyard, that is extremely high-density. You cannot find anywhere to park there. I have been towed twice trying to find parking there. It is not a good counterargument, in my opinion, that we just don't have the experience in Spanish Fork specifically when we see it anywhere else. Another thing is this connection with Wheatfield Lane, they're saying that this could be an option to just remove that connection. I also don't think this will help at all. I think people will still come around to park because, as they had mentioned, garages will not be used for parking your, your vehicle. You're putting your toys in it, you're going to put your side by side, they're going to put, use it for storage, they're going to come around, park on the backside, and enter through their back door. So even having, removing the connection on Wheatfield Lane still won't resolve a lot of problems. So a lot, a lot of my concern in, in having this, this zone change is that we're trying to represent corporations and developers as opposed to the existing citizens of Spanish Fork. We know what the citizens of Spanish Fork want. We are a small community. There's no problem with high-density, but this doesn't seem the place. People are in this neighborhood because they like having the openness, they like being able to have their children play, and when you just flood that in with hundreds of people, there could be two hundred, three hundred people that could live in here. The amount of cars that will pile up here will flood all the neighborhoods regardless of if there's a connecting lane here or not.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is BJ Ryan with Lennar, and I have heard the theme that seems to run tonight And I think, could we, could we go back to the overall of the community? The two big, there are three big things that I've heard. One is Wheatfield Lane and the potential for vehicles traveling from the Escala community, migrating down through, through the community to the west to get somewhere. As we look at, looking at the overhead we had seen previously, that's several turns, stops, and, and the overhead that we saw, we also had, there were cars parked on those streets too. So moving through this neighborhood really isn't very convenient. To leave the proposed Escala neighborhood by the two other entrances that are on Del Monte, and then turning south and driving up to Arrowhead Lane where you can catch a right on red or a green light, and then get up to speed and move down and to wherever your business is, I think that that's much more realistic. I don't know about all of you, but when I get into my car, I want to take the path of least resistance. And I hear what these folks are saying and the concern about moving through the neighborhood, but I just believe that functionally, it is easier, and we are creatures of habit, to move to Del Monte Road, to head north, or to move down to Arrowhead Trail, to head out to the west, or east into town. So I, I don't want to discount what they're saying, because I believe everyone is entitled to their thoughts, but my thought is, I will take the path of least resistance. And if I can get on one street and catch a light and get up to speed and drive in a straight line without having to worry about children, other cars, or other items on the street, I believe that that is a logical process that will happen. The other thing that I've heard a lot of is parking. Our townhomes, we have two different townhomes. One of the townhomes, as other individuals have said, does not have parking in the driveways. But every single townhome in there has a two-car garage. If you look at the townhomes that run along the perimeter with, with our neighbors, that, those townhomes have driveways that accommodate two-car garages, or two cars, and the, and the garages accommodate two cars. When we met with Planning Commission, one of the things that they were concerned about was garages don't get used for, for parking, it's storage. All of our townhomes have full basements. We don't finish them, there is storage there. We were also asked to add that in our CCNRs, at least one car must be stored within the garage, and we agreed to that. So we also look at the parking stalls that are included, that are separate from the residences, and there's sixty-eight of them. We're only required to have twenty-nine. So we are working with the city, we are listening to the city, we are working with staff on traffic. We do not have an opinion on Wheatfield Lane. We feel that is a, that is a city decision of whether it should connect or not. For it to do so or not would not, is not a concern to us at this point, because we have our two entrances. It is a little tough to hear, I started to hear that they don't want our customers, but our customers are your fellow townspeople. Not everybody can afford eight-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, and these homes allow your existing residents, and there will be some new, new people from out of town, to still stay in your community and live there with not, and, and, and be able to afford a, a home that they might not be able to if it was a half-acre lot, or even, even smaller, a quarter-acre lot. I can really appreciate how people feel about a city growing, but a city grows because it has things that attract people to the city. It could be the people, it could be the amenities, it could be the schools, it could be the church, it could be the community. There are lots of reasons that attract people to a community or make people stay and want to be a part of it. And I feel that we have, I feel that the owners who are not represented today, I think they have done a good job of working with the city. I feel that Lennar has done a good job of working with staff and other departments to bring a project that fits the city's standards and guidelines, and I believe makes the town better. Because it isn't our house that makes it better, it is the people in the house.
Right.
I think you should approve the subdivision because it fits, I think it fits the requirements, and I think that it is an asset for your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jordan Brown, and I just live in the Old Mill Estate subdivision. And I think we've talked a lot about traffic, so I don't talk too much about it, but one of the things that's concerning for me is just the Del Monte Road. I think we've talked about, I think he's right, Mr. Lennar, I didn't catch your name, but we, we take the path of least resistance, right? So when he says like, people probably won't cut through, I would, I would say he's probably right if Del Monte wasn't used like it is, right? You get backed up at that light. So I'm just wondering, I know that there was a big traffic study done on it, and I think it was acceptable to the city. Because I've not learned in the area of city what's acceptable and codes and things like that, I just wonder if, if that, if that's acceptable to the city, if maybe Spanish Fork could do a little bit better. If we could look to maybe making, I mean, I don't know how you can make, there are road, road conditions that are going to be, like, improved a little bit, right? Even with those, I know there's still a lot of concern, so I just wonder if like, whatever was passing, if, I just wondered if maybe Spanish Fork could, in the next projects, because I don't know that it's going to affect this one, but we could do a little bit better going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, City Council, my name's Ty Tingey. I'm just a dumb old cowboy, I want you to know that. I know a lot of you. I grew up in Spanish Fork, and I am the property owner, me and my family. I would just like to say, in just defense of the property owners, we are not a big corporation, nor big-money developers. I would like to say that this is like selling one of my children. I'm not happy about this at all. The reason we are forced to sell is the neighborhood. I can't get my cattle out of the pen, and it's not this big development trying to make money. The reason we are selling is because of the neighborhood. Over twenty years ago, Dave Boyler came to me, and he said, "Ty, this is inevitable. You better be thinking about it." And he told me about the billboard out here on the freeway, and he says, "It says, 'Spanish Fork, home of pride and progress.'" He said, "Read that word, 'progress.'" And he said, "It's going to happen, Ty." Basically, it's taken my livelihood away, and I'm not, it's just inevitable. It's, it's, it is what it is. We have not, we've tried to get along with the city. This is the first time I've been involved, I've never seen this plat map. I'm not a professional. Like I said, I'm just a cowboy. Whether we relocate or whatever, we want to get along with Spanish Fork City, we always have. My child out there's been called an eyesore, and it kind of is, I guess. And it will be a great improvement to Spanish Fork. I just want to know on behalf of my family that we are not here on the big-money thing. We're trying to do what's right, what's best for our family, and we also want to try and get along with the neighborhood and Spanish Fork City, and that's what we've tried to do for over a year. So I appreciate your time, and hopefully we can all still be friends when this is over. Thank you.
Thanks, Ty.
Ty.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments?
So, we're voting on the zone change here, because most of this was directed at the subdivision, right? We're not.
We also have the preliminary plat.
Are we going to do them both together?
That'll be the next one. Right now, this is, this is talking about the zone change.
Can we do them together? I mean, do one and then the other, but.
Can we do them?
Do we vote together or separately?
Well, I mean, separate, but just like while all those, these people are here and while our train of thought is all on this.
Yeah, well, after we vote for the zone change, we'll go, we'll go to that one next. So we're right together.
I'm not sure who would answer this, whether it be Dave, or perhaps Chief Adams with Public Safety, or, but I really would like staff to take a stab at Tyler's question. Give me a good response for why, why the road needs to connect. I'm looking at a traffic study here that's four-hundred-and-twenty-three pages in one document and ninety-two in another from Hales Engineering, and I.
You're not going to read it?
I scoured, I didn't read it.
Maybe Chris, you want to take a stab at him?
I, I'm going to just echo what Dave said. By, by our city standards, this is actually low connectivity. We usually like to see a couple road connections through a neighborhood. Anyway, the traffic study, wouldn't have really looked at that because that's assumed that you would get those connections as much as you can. It'd probably assume more connections than just one, actually. The traffic studies that, that we did were more related to ALA and kind of the horrible traffic that we have at peak times for that development. We formed a steering committee made up of some residents in this area, the ALA staff, UDOT was involved, and some city staff. And then we hired a firm that, that had a lot of expertise in traffic studies for charter schools. They had done some forty different charter school traffic studies. And we met over a course of about a year, and they came up with a lot of different recommendations. And the steering committee was able to, to look at those recommendations and say what would work best in that area. And, and with the recommendations of this traffic engineer, they came up with a system with a light down on Mill Road and Arrow Trail, which UDOT agreed to construct. They were part of that traffic study. Came up with the roundabout at Mill Road and eleven-hundred South, which the developer to the north of this development helped to fund, and that is being constructed right now. And then some islands and some directional stuff on eleven-hundred South. And anyway, that modeled, modeled out really well. It's a recommendation of traffic engineers that are a lot better professionally trained than me at, at this type of stuff. And, and we believe that it will work well. You, you wouldn't do a traffic study on connectivity, things like this, it's, there's...
But you had the buy-in of, of ALA and other schools, did you say?
So ALA, ALA, UDOT, and then some residents in this area, so...
Brandon, if I, if I may, you're okay, Chris. Just, just, I want to make a comment to your question.
Okay.
So after spending, sorry Seth, thirty years in Orem.
Oh, yeah.
I hate Orem. Because Orem subdivisions is this right here. These children are going to be going to the same schools. These kids are going to be playing with your kids in Old Mill. And they're going to be associating with them. In Orem, if you have to get to this subdivision, you have to, just what you're going to do here, you're going to drive clear around the buck to get to these homes. The entire Orem city is in that way. I hate that city. When you was trying to get from one subdivision to the other subdivision, it, you had to spend time driving when if all they'd have done is done one small connectivity road, it would have solved huge problems. And, and, and some of those city officials back then said the same thing. We, we kind of did it that kind of wrong, because we should have had some of that connectivity in some of them subdivisions. Now, this is a high-density versus maybe, well, a medium versus a low-density, I get that. But I also believe that, as BJ said, th- these are going to be citizens of Spanish Fork. They're going to be going to the same schools they're going to be associating with. And that Wheatfield Lane, I understand your safety issues, and I, I get, Mr. Goble, I understand perfectly your child wanting to play there. And, and not one of us on this bench up here ever want to put anybody in safety issue, and we don't want to see anybody hurt. And I assure you that those are always the concern, especially when Chris talks about them. But a connectivity like this, and I don't see anybody, I don't know why you would go that way to go to Old Mill Road, especially when you talk about the times that are busy. And it's at fifteen minutes to eight in the morning, and then in the afternoon at two-thirty for fifteen minutes, that road is busy. I, I understand that, I've sat there and watched that time and time again. But a connectivity road for me, i- is important to, to join the subdivisions. Not, not just to, for all those other reasons, but it, it joins the subdivisions, and it doesn't make it isolated. So this is isolated, and this is isolated, and they're two separate things. And I get that maybe what you guys said, some of you, this is why we moved here, is to keep that away from it, it's still isolated. And what they did here with those homes, I'm not a huge fan of the high-density, you know that. But what they did with these single-family homes, I would like to see a few more of them along there to help that blend in. But I think that connectivity road, I don't think it'll be abused like it is. I do have some issues about the parking, but we'll talk about them when we get to the subdivision.
I just want to follow up to your question, Councilman Gordon, I think is a great question. And I, I want to just give some examples to some of the things that Councilman Argal just expressed. If I can get a map of, of the city.
Can you show my old subdivision?
Yeah, yeah, we can look at that for sure. But I think maybe just zoom out one level. This is probably the best answer of why connectivity is important. And, and we'll consider this, this access point for this neighborhood and this access point for that neigh, for this same neighborhood, all of this area. If we had the ability to do this subdivision over again, we should have two or three other access points. Because it forces all of the traffic for our neighborhood to hit this one point. And I feel very bad for the neighbors, the residents that live right here or right there. Because they are the single point of traffic and conflict, if you will. And so if we have fewer points of, of access into and out of neighborhoods, then this becomes that point in this neighborhood. And this becomes that point in the neighborhood. And of course, that one too. And, and so more connectivity like Chris mentioned is helpful in moving the inter-neighborhood traffic around. I think the, the applicant has been very receptive to the concerns expressed by the neighbors about having through traffic. It would be most efficient if there were straight roads, right? Our grid network that we have here in town would speak to that movement being, you know, just straight roads. But I think the, the applicant's been responsive to the concern of, of making it easy for people to move around through there. And so we don't see long, straight roads, which these neighbors will tell you, those long, straight roads create speed problems and other issues. And so the, the movement of these roads will, will impact, I think, in a positive way. Let's go to, let's go up to the east bench for a second, maybe fourteen-hundred east, seventeen-hundred east, twenty-three-hundred east. Yeah, you don't type it in there, yeah, that won't work well for you. This, yeah. So these, these are developing, or these are more developed areas. And I think these, these give a good representation of how traffic moves around an area. And for purposes of, of this subdivision that we're talking about today, Mill Road acts a lot like, let's say, this road here, and Del Monte acts like that road there, or eleven, let's see, fourteen-hundred east or seventeen-hundred east, those could be perfectly analogous to Del Monte and, and Mill Road. And, and the number of access points, anybody that, that is, lives in these areas understands and knows which way they're going. If you live mid-block, I know some of you on this, on the days today, you, some of you may live in this area, some of the staff may live in this area, let's say. And if they're going to a point this way, I know two or three of you that use seventeen-hundred east. If you're going to a point that way, I know some of you that go to fourteen-hundred east. I know some of you that are coming from this way, go on seventeen-hundred east to then backtrack into the western neighborhood. Because it is that path of least resistance, even though there's a road that you could drive down here and then wind your way up to a neighborhood there. And the reason I bring up this area is to, to say we have examples of, of traffic moving. And greater access and greater, greater connectivity is important for the movement of people between these neighborhoods as they grow and develop. Lastly, we have stub streets throughout the city in, in lots of areas. Let's see, where, where are we? Let's zoom in on this neighborhood for just a second. Doesn't really matter what this neighborhood is. But as this farm is an active farm today with, with cattle and pigs and sheep, we have prepared through the development process that there likely will be some kind of connection here. And there will likely be some kind of a connection there. We've, we've provided for future accesses. How this piece develops, I have no idea. That, that person is still farming, just as Mr. Tingey has been up until this point. But we provide for future access so that the property can be used and the neighbors can be connected. And, and so that's probably the, the best answer that I can give to why. Which I think is a great question, and I appreciate that it was asked by one of the residents. And it's, it is all about the connectivity of the neighborhood. And as we consider the, the traffic that comes from homes, homes generally aren't the, the real issue that causes traffic in a neighborhood. It's, it's some kind of a gathering point, such as in this case, the ALA is, as Chris talked about. And that will be, this isn't creating that, this is coming long after that. And with the widening of, this will be the final piece, I think, of the widening to Del Monte. And that'll make Del Monte function just like twenty-three-hundred east in this neighborhood does. Just like seventeen-hundred east in this neighborhood does, with full widths. And, and I think it's a three-lane road, right? And, and so actually, this, this will be a puzzle piece, one of the final puzzle pieces to making Del Monte a better, a better functioning road in that area. Mill Road still has a, a little bit of work. And development will, will solve some of that in time. But, but for Del Monte, this will be a big, big piece of that puzzle.
Great, thank you, Seth. Anyone else?
I got a question really quick for Dave on garage that was brought up. Maybe it's not Dave, maybe somebody can help us with too. But Jason brought up two-and-a-quarter parking spaces and, and to change it to, to don't allow garage space to be a parking spot. I don't know if, I guess my question is more on the, the level of land use in estate arena. And, and if us being able to make an ordinance like that, or adjust an ordinance and say parking, a garage can't be included as parking. Is that conducive to, you know, something we could change in zonings to, to say, hey, your garage, you're not going to park in it, so we're not going to count it?
Absolutely. The standard could be written, just the way Mr. Rasmussen described it, to where we simply wouldn't count that towards the parking requirement. There are a lot of other things that can be done as well, so certainly that's an option.
It could be adjusted, don't it?
Yep.
Anything else?
Mayor, to clarify on the process, there are two different items on the agenda that runs this public hearing on the zone change.
Right.
So if you vote on that, and if you wanted to address the other one, then I would just move through, get the order of the agenda.
Right.
There are ones, most likely, ones administrative membership, two different.
Right, yeah, yeah, we'll do that. Thanks, Vaughn.
So a quick question on that, with the two different votes, will there be two different discussions? Or, I, I mean, in that, are we talking?
Right now, we're talking about the zone change, so we're going to talk about the zone change. The next one, we'll be talking about
Preliminary plat.
The preliminary plat.
Great.
How's that?
Perfect. No, so in, as far as zone change, since that's the item we are discussing, mixed use describes a land development containing two or more major types of uses, typically including residential, commercial, office, and institutional. It's been mentioned before to explain, please, as to how and why. I won't go into comments that have been made on social media as to, people are not my schoolchildren, one I've tried to explain before, but I will do it again despite those comments that may still come. This is a mixed, this is the perfect area for mixed use. You have institutional with ALA, you have institutional with M A T C. Office and commercial may come. Although with the, with the preliminary plats that are being proposed, it doesn't look like they will. But again, looking at simply the zone change, this is an area by definition for mixed use. And so that is how I am looking at it. And when we get to a vote, that is how I will vote, is to approve the zone change because it does by definition fit all the markers for mixed use.
Any other comments? Not, then I'd entertain a motion.
Zone change. Mayor, I approve to, I move to approve the Escala Town Home Zone Change. Proposal involves changing the zoning of a property located approximately thirteen-hundred South Del Monte Road from rural residential to residential three based on the following findings. Do we need to read the findings, or, okay? Uh, well, I'll read them so that there's no confusion as to what, what is being suggested. One, that the subject property has a general planned use designation of medium density residential. Two, that the designation has a maximum density of eight units per acre. Three, that the R-three zone is consistent with the medium density residential designa, designation, provided that the density does not exceed eight units per acre. Four, that the proposal is consistent with the general plan and proposed zoning, provided that the density does not exceed eight units per acre. And five, that the proposal helps to provide a range of housing types and price levels within the city.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes. Second by Councilman Gordon. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Rebecca.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Menahal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
All right, so we're going to change the order, we're going to move down to new business. And we're going to do A, Scotty preliminary plat master plan development. Where's Dave? Did you, did we lose him? So every, did you say everything you wanted about this?
I don't think it happened.
Okay.
I have some questions.
All right.
I have a couple, I'll start.
Okay.
So with density here, you said that there's going to be ten single homes, about ninety-eight townhomes. But just in the townhome section, it's closer to nine units per acre. Did I understand that right? If you take out the single-family.
If you take out the acreage that's devoted to the single-family homes and just look at that, that part that's the townhomes, then it is just over nine units to the acre for the townhome part. For purposes of determining whether a project is consistent with our zoning code and general plan, we'd look at the total area.
Right.
But again, I mentioned that, that was something that a couple of planning commissioners specifically asked about for, so, just that data.
So if, or I don't know if you would know this, or BJ, if you would know this, if we got it down to the eight units per acre, how many townhomes would we have to take out? Do we know that off the top of our heads, or could we figure that out?
I can do some quick math, I have those numbers I could...
I personally would, would vote for this project if we can get the overall acres down to that nine units, like we just approved, it says in the zoning that we just approved, the designation has a maximum density of eight units per acre. So I, and then number three says do not exceed eight units per acre. So I would like to see the townhomes get closer to that. So that's one comment. And then Dave, how many acres was the, our vote back in the fall with Arrive? This is fourteen, what was theirs?
So Arrive has fifty-four homes on, that's the Del Monte Town Homes Development. Thank you, yep, five-point-six acres. So that's where they're just over nine units to the acre on that project. And if I understand you, Councilwoman Beck, you'd like us just to, to see for the, the townhome part of the project, which is eleven-point-one-four acres, how many homes they could have there without exceeding eight units to the acre?
Yeah, it looks like it would be pretty close to what the Arrive development was, right? If they were at five-point-six acres, and this is going to be eleven-point-one-four? Anyways, yeah, if we can get...
Let me try describing what I think you're saying a little differently. If we're just going to focus on the part of the proposal that's devoted to townhomes, that's eleven-point-one-four units to the acre.
Okay.
And you're saying you'd like to understand how many townhomes they could have there without having more than eight per acre? Is that right? Okay, I'll get that number.
Good luck.
We'll just take a minute, but I sure want to double-check it before I say anything, so...
Stay there for just a minute. So some of the questions and concerns are the parking. So he mentioned one, that one spot in the garage has to be, has to have a car in it? What was that condition?
Yes.
So you're, so you're counting that as one of the spots? But then he said he had, only needed thirty-nine, but he had sixty-three spots?
A unit has two.
Two and a quarter.
Each garage has a two-car garage, is that correct?
But one has to park a car, is that what I understand, BJ?
You can just nod yes or no.
Yeah, so some of, some of the townhomes have...
Need to come up here, come up here, would you?
Yeah, if you're good, yeah.
Hello again, BJ Ryan. Some of the, some of the townhomes have four parking stalls per unit. The single families have four parking stalls per unit. The interior townhomes do not have available parking in a driveway, but they have two stalls or two... Room for two cars in the garages. My comment was, we were required to have, I think it was 29 additional parking stalls based on city calculation. And I believe we are at 68. And the stalls that I'm referencing are the parking stalls coming off the public road and then the interior private roads. So we have a fair amount of parking.
68 besides the town, besides garages and...
68, I'll call it free... Just free parking stalls. They are not in someone's garage or in some... Or someone's driveway. They would be to be accessed by visitors.
I seem to recall in the planning commission, it also came up that I cannot park on the street in this area. Is that correct? Unless I'm offloading my...
Right. So the big loop is a public road. And the HOA management company will manage to the parking that the city establishes on the public road. The two interior roads, yes, those will be controlled. We don't allow parking there. Couple of reasons. It gets crowded. We have fire issues to worry about. There are numerous reasons for us to police ourselves and our community that are beneficial to the community. I cannot speak to what everybody drives or what everybody parks. And... But, you know, this community... We are changing as a society. We talk about the large lots. People can't afford them, or we have dual working, dual income families. And so they're getting their kids into structured activities. So what's happening is, part of the reason, besides costs, that this type of living is becoming more popular is it meets people's lifestyle. They are going to other places. And just like you have city parks that you're developing for your people, we're doing the same thing here. You know, I've heard talk about safety. We're widening Del Monte Road. We have a nice wide park strip with a trail system. So we are working to complete and make this area easier for pedestrians and easier for traffic to flow. There's a lot of good things. But yes, we... Your direct answer to your question? Yeah, we are very good at controlling parking.
Okay. What will be in the middle of this island that's on Wheatfield if it were to go in? Landscaping?
Yeah, it'll be landscaping. It's a raised curb. It's a raised curb median. So by nature, it is narrow going through there. So when you talk about boats and trailers and other things, that's just not the place to bring a truck plus a trailer of sorts. You've got a narrow... It's narrow, it's got a kink in it, it's got raised curves in it. It will be landscaped, you know, as far as shrubbery and whatnot. It's not a... For us, it's not a big thing. If you want two rocks on either end to further discourage people who might think that they are, you know, the best... Best at jockeying trucks or trailers, we can do that. But it is... There's a lot of parking there.
Thanks, Senator Shuker.
Thank you.
Is that a clubhouse and a pool?
Playground and a pavilion.
Pavilion, okay.
Instead of 98, 89 would have the townhome part of the development this year. If we just look at that acreage there at eight units to the acre, then they'd go from 98 to 89 to be at eight on just that part. And I feel like maybe just describe a little bit more about our parking requirements. If, for example, with this kind of a housing style here, a developer has a two-car garage and a driveway that's 20 feet deep, then we don't require any other parking than that. With the idea that at least potentially, there are four parking spaces available there, I completely concur that it's pretty rare that people are putting two cars in a garage. And that's where I think there is merit to maybe revising that standard, at least taking a look at it. But that's the requirement for that particular type of a townhome. So when we talk about additional parking, then it's for the 58 homes that they have right now in the plan that don't have that driveway because they are required to have that additional half a space per unit. In this case, as I think has been mentioned, they have some 37 spaces above and beyond that half a space per unit requirement. But also, just to clarify this, Mr. Ryan mentioned that this is a public street through here. Practically speaking, looking at really big sections of that, where in essence, it's just big banks of driveways or parking like they're showing there, there is no availability for any on-street parking. But likewise, there are some pretty significant runs along that street where I'm sure people would park on the street, just like they do. Throughout the community and all the neighborhoods in Spanish Fork, our streets are designed with that expectation. So from my perspective, that's really kind of the pressure relief valve, if you will, in terms of there being adequate parking in the development. I'm not sure that standalone 37 additional spaces would be enough just based on what we see elsewhere. For whatever reason it is, people in Spanish Fork have a lot of cars, even in these types of neighborhoods. And our standard at two and a half spaces per home for a project like this is on the higher end right now in Utah County. But yet, you know, again, we acknowledge that we still see projects with cars parked out out on bigger streets and things like that, even with that. But where there is room for dozens of other cars to park in the neighborhood on the public street, I think there won't be problems.
Okay, kind of addressing what Councilmember Beck's talking about. Typically, when someone comes in and gives us a plot plan, we have done, you know... Whoa, whoa, where are you going? Get back here. Don't walk away from me. You know? Typically, they've had mixed use similar to that. You know, they've had bigger lots. We've let them have smaller lots. As long as the overall development reaches that, in this case, eight homes per acre. Is that correct?
That's how we calculate it, per the ordinance, yes.
So that's typical, that's normal, how we usually do it.
Correct.
Okay.
So we've never looked at it the other way, really? It doesn't sound like...
For purposes of determining whether something complies with the standard or not? No, it's looking at the overall density.
Okay.
And that would be because it was filed as a master plan development, correct?
That's what gives both an applicant the flexibility to propose something and the council, you know, the flexibility to approve something that doesn't explicitly meet all of the standards that we have for a particular zoning district, yes.
What's the remedy? Mr. Okerland, I think Okerland and Mr. Conde that live close here to this, what's been a dead-end road so far? What's the remedy? If somebody does park, you know, if they were to say, hey, I don't have room here, so I'm going to park my boat in front of their home? What... Remind me the ordinance of how long that could happen on a public street before we... Typically, it's a phone call pretty quick.
State's 48, city's 72.
72?
Yes.
Do we foresee people parking out on Del Monte like up at Somerset on Canyon Road? Is that going to be red marked or allowed or...?
I don't know that we have any plans right out of the chute to red curb that. I'd maybe use the project on Volunteer Drive, the townhomes there that are just north of the sports park as an example. I think parking along Volunteer Drive was very, very attractive for the people that lived in those units that are, you know, that face Volunteer Drive. I suspect it's going to be very similar here and even with the Del Monte development to the north. So unless, you know, the city does take some action to not allow parking, I think that's likely going to happen.
But we can address that. If we see that becomes a problem, we could...
Exactly.
We could redline that and, you know...
This the back of their homes? And then there's a masonry wall between the... Or there's no masonry?
No, in fact...
I remember there being masonry wall discussion, the planning commission where that's at, right?
Yeah. This is, I believe, what the streetscape along Del Monte Drive will look like. So a little different fence than what Arrive proposed to construct between the homes and the trail there along Del Monte Drive. But the idea is that you'd have a fence with a gate with homes that front onto Del Monte Drive. Hence, you know, I think parking along Del Monte Drive is probably going to be pretty attractive.
Dave, according to our last draft, they said there was no parking because the road's not wide enough based on the build-out. There would be no parking on Del Monte.
I'm not sure that that's accurate, honestly. Well, Del Monte Drive and roads like that are typically designed to accommodate shoulders with parking. If it's a big deal or a problem, then that's when...
Well, when they did the plan, they said it wasn't wide enough, but they were going to let even plus spots to do it for the three lanes. They were trying to put for traffic.
Got it. I'm not sure that that's true. I'm really not. Just because I'm not aware of anything that would prevent Del Monte Drive from being constructed to the full typical build-out width that we would usually require, haven't heard otherwise. If we end up restricting parking there...
Well, we likely, if there's more parking there, it's safer for us in the neighborhood. We're just...
Potentially, yeah. We'd be happy to look into that and get back with a more definitive answer than maybe I'm giving. I hadn't expected that right out of the chute, we'd red curb that or do something like that.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I would like to address the three items that were brought up as concerns by several different citizens. With that, I do have one caveat. We were admonished to consider... To consider these issues. And please know, I've been at this a long time. These are being considered, have been considered, and will continue to be considered. My fear is that in whatever the vote is, if it goes one way or another, I think that society in general has a viewpoint of, if you don't vote or don't do what I want done, then you didn't hear me or you didn't consider it. And so please know that that is not the case. And so I'm making a definitive statement of it is being considered, and I will explain as to how I have considered it. The first was traffic. The end of Wheatfield Lane. We've all seen those roads that just abut. In fact, I was just at one of my old fifth grader's weddings in Lehigh. She's, of course, no longer a fifth grader, but there was a road that abutted. And as I was driving with my wife, I noticed it and had looked at it thinking, at some point, a road will come through there. If the developer of the neighborhood here to the south... Could we go to that big map? Has the yellow... Yes. So if the developer of this neighborhood had ever considered it to not go through... And again, as Seth had talked about, these access points are put in on purpose. This would have been a cul-de-sac. And so for me, and again, my perspective, for me, I would have bought or looked at any road that abutted like that thinking there will be a road that comes through there at some point. Now, crystal ball as to whether it would be townhouses, single homes, industrial use, or whatever, that's neither here nor there. But clearly, that access was put in there. And I'll talk to that about safety here in just a minute. Traffic, my understanding, at least as I read through, I didn't see any reason why with Del Monte being widened, why there couldn't be parking on there, which I will transition to. But traffic, things that have been said in opposition have been absolutes. And really, there's no way that we can definitively say what is absolute with the people that moved to this area, should it be approved. But every statement this evening and emails that I've received against, which I have received some for this project, emails to the contrary have all been an absolute. People will drive through, people will speed. And there's just no way to know that, no way to see that, no way to predict that other than through a traffic study. Traffic study the city has done. And I have to be able to trust that process since I don't have a crystal ball and can't definitively say, speak to the driving habits of those that might come through there. Parking, traffic, parking, parking, excuse me, certainly adds to traffic or can congest traffic. I have driven through this neighborhood, which is the neighborhood that is worried about traffic coming through there, no less than 12 times. And yes, I have kept track of each time that I've driven through there. No less than 12 times this past year alone. And I'm not talking the year of 2021, but just the working year. No less than 12 times. And as I've gone through, there are people already parking on the streets. There are people that have full garages. And I have been through the neighborhood as people are in there. Garage doors are up and there are full garages. And so I find it disingenuine to levy a requirement on citizens of Spanish Fork that they have to have at least one vehicle in their garage. But this neighborhood does not have a requirement for one vehicle in the garage. Now, I understand the reasons for doing it is to lighten the parking. It's already been expressed that you can park on any city street for up to 72 hours. And so by that, Lieutenant Johnson, I understand that if I owned a boat, I could go into this neighborhood or this one or this one or this part of the city over here and park my boat or my fifth wheel, if I had one, or whichever vehicle for 72 hours.
24 hours for a trailer.
24 hours for a trailer? Perfect. But the point being, these are public roads. And so if we have restrictions on who can and who cannot park, then we have to have restrictions on who pays for the snow removal, who pays for the infrastructure improvements, who pays for those types of things. And since those are public roads, the neighborhood does not park in their driveways and garages. And I'm speaking generally because some do. But since this neighborhood does not... Excuse me? And that's awful looking. Since that neighborhood does not... Oh, it's the same color. Only park in their driveways and garages, it would be safe to assume that the parking issues that would add to any traffic concerns are currently being generated by this neighborhood. And so if there's any unsafe actions with traffic current or possible future, those are compounded by the residents of this neighborhood parking there currently already. And anyone either in this projected project or anyone else in the city could park on those roads because it's completely legal since they're public roads. Lastly, safety was a concern. And my consideration for safety, if we look at this spot right here, right here at this intersection of Wheatfield Lane, just down from that entry point right there from the proposed project, if there were an accident at that exact spot, whether someone has a heart attack or a car accident or a cycling accident, whatever the case may be, coming from... If public safety came from their stations and supposing they came using the most direct and quickest routes, if we take it right here from this point at Arrowhead Trail and Del Monte Road, if the ambulance going to that accident right there where someone is injured critically, seriously, or even very minor accident, from that point, using the quickest route down through the existing roads to get to there, it would take approximately 1,200 meters. So almost, just shy of a mile, but I'm rounding. It would take approximately 1,200 meters to get from here to that point using the existing roads. With the project and the roads as they are and this little connection coming right there, if EMS goes from this up using the roads that are projected, using that little access point and right there, it is 600 meters. They would get there in half the time. And so safety and my consideration is, if there is any resident of Spanish Fork City injured at that intersection, I want our EMS crews to get there in half the time. And they will get there with that little... And they will get there with that little access point in half the time. They will get there with, with 600 meters of travel space versus 1,200 meters of travel space. If it's my loved one, I want that ambulance there as quickly as possible. Whether it's 500 meters, 1,200 meters, 300 meters, I want them there as quickly as possible. And so, for those considerations, um, those are why or how I have considered your concerns. I have heard them, I have looked at them, I have weighed them before. Again, off of your comments, I am weighing them again. And I s- that's, those are my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? So, in your CCRs, CCRs, CCNRs, uh, number five says that they will require for some minimum one vehicle be parked in each garage. Is that correct? That was one of the findings. So, you know, that's going to be there. That has to have at least one in there. So... Okay. Any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Can I say one more thing?
Come on up, since you're the developer.
Thank you, BJ Ryan. The, the one other thing I think about, so, so it sounds like our project will meet zoning. It sounds like we understand that, that density is an overall. But the one thing I just thought of, as I keep hearing, a big issue is parking. If there was, if we reduce units, that reduces parking based on requirements. So, I'd like for you guys to also give me the running room or the bandwidth, to the extent that I can help, who will be our neighbors to deliver as that parking.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm still waiting for a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I move we approve the Escala preliminary plat- master plan development. The proposal includes some 108 homes located approximately 1,300 South Del Monte Road, based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. And again, these are either as stated, or go ahead, read them. Okay. The findings that the subject property has a general plan, land use designation of medium density residential, that the designation has a maximum density of eight units per acre, that the R3 zone is consistent with the medium density residential designation, provided that the density does not exceed eight units per acre, that the proposal is consistent with the general plan and proposed zoning, provided that the density does not exceed eight units per acre, that the proposal helps to provide a range of housing types and price levels within the city. Conditions, that the applicant meets the city's zoning requirements and construction standards, that a six-foot masonry wall be constructed where any multifamily units abut a non-residential or single-family use, that the applicant addresses any red lines, if the traffic calming island be required, that the CCNRs require and enforce that a minimum of one vehicle be parked in each garage, that the CCNRs require and enforce for the entire project, a maximum 15% rental rate with 85% owner occupied.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Gordon. This is also a roll call vote. Uh, Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right. That is approved. So, let's go back to our, uh, B on public hearings. Ordinance Z10-21, 3G zone change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subject property here is 47 acres and some change. It's located on the west side of 300 West, west of PDM Steel, which is right here. So, Interstate 15, uh, is just kind of on the corner of the image right there. Um, this is 1,000 north, if anybody's been out. In this part of the city lately, you've noticed that there's an industrial development happening right here. There are a handful of buildings that are under construction right now there. Eventually, there's another component to the, uh, the proposal here tonight. This is just a proposed zone change, to change the zoning map from rural residential to industrial one. I think this image does a pretty good job of illustrating, uh, where currently that industrial one zoning exists in the vicinity. Um, essentially, everything on the east side of 300 West, PDM Steel and everything to the north is zoned, industrial one, has been zoned that way for quite some time. The property adjacent to the subject property to the west as well is zoned industrial one. And indeed, the city's general plan for the entire area for several decades now has identified the area as being appropriate for industrial uses. So, just looking at that, um, frankly, it's really easy, I think, for staff to recommend that the proposed zone change be approved. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have made that recommendation. Um, I'll take just a quick minute as well to review this. This is, um, a representation of what I understand the, um, the applicants would ultimately like to do, which is an industrial subdivision with various lots on the property. They would like to develop one of those for their own operation. Uh, I would, I would call that a meat packing facility. Um, we're working on some text amendments for that. We anticipate having those, um, on your next agenda in July, after going to the Planning Commission, most likely with some other text amendments that are in the works, um, here in just a couple of weeks. Um, and, uh, again, that's forthcoming. But for tonight, what's on the agenda is just definitely the map amendment, changing the subject property to industrial one.
So, so the forthcoming is to allow a packing plant within that I1, right?
It would do a couple of different things, what's proposed. It would expressly define what that is. And then to expressly make that a particular type of permitted use, a conditional use, in the industrial one zone.
Changing the entire I industrial one zone to allow meat packing in any of those zones, correct?
Correct, yes. Not on the agenda tonight, but that's... What's in the works.
All right. So, this is a public hearing.
Motion to go on a public hearing.
Second. Can I motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come up and address the mayor of council on this? Come on up, state your name, and you got your three minutes of fame. Seeing none. I'd enter...
Whoop. Hey, you don't hesitate. I'm quicker.
Yes, you are quick. Good evening. My name is Matthew Smith. Um, I'm part of the group and one of the applicants that's looking for the approval of the zo- zone change on this particular piece of property. Um, I'll start by saying that, um, we are currently operating in, in Draper, a family-owned business. Um, I'm currently third generation. Uh, my grandfather started our, our business, uh, around 1945. And to current, we provide a huge, uh, service and need for the dairyman and the cattlemen of, of Utah and surrounding states. Um, currently, we, we are processing roughly 70,000 head of cattle, um, through our facility in, in Draper. Um, and we look to relocate, uh, to Spanish Fork for that same purpose. Um, s- some of the things that I'd like to mention is, um, as a young boy, I remember in the eighties and the nineties coming to Spanish Fork and, uh, particularly with my uncle, who attended the two auctions, livestock auctions, who were, that were located here in the city, um, here at the rodeo arenas and one just adjacent to the property that we're looking at. Uh, very fond memories and, again, a service that I feel like, um, we provided then and that we want to continue to provide in the future. Um, currently, we are, uh, providing employment opportunities to roughly 110 employees. Um, our median wage is roughly, uh, $25 an hour with a Fortune 500 benefit package. Um, and we would like to, uh, continue that and offer that to the citizens of, of Spanish Fork City. Um, furthermore, um, we are the only packing plant, um, in the state of Utah. Um, our business in Draper is, um, the ground has recently been purchased, and we will be needing to relocate. And we've been working with the, the owners of this property now since around the first of the year. Um, and we would appreciate your consideration for the approval of this zone change. Um, one other comment I'd like to make regarding the, the cattlemen and the dairyman. Um, to the west of us, uh, to the west of Utah Lake is the largest dairy in the state of Utah that we, uh, provide a service to of, of, uh, allowing them or, or purchasing from them roughly, um, 70 head of cattle, uh, on a weekly basis. Um, we have hundreds of suppliers, both locally and out of state, who, uh, provide us with, with cattle. Um, we are a meat processing facility, and our raw product is, uh, cows and bulls that we process for meat, meat products. And so, again, I would thank you for your time and your consideration and your approval of this zone change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, could we have your twin brother get up and say the same thing? Just, just kidding, Mike. Stay down. Stay, stay down. Threw me off, though, when I winked at Matt. I am Matt Mike, just to be clear.
I can't tell my part yet either.
I know.
So, uh, my name is Brett Baling. I represent Utah Farm Bureau. I also have a small cattle ranch in the southeast part of the state, and just want to echo what the, the Smith family has, uh, done for the industry. If, if we lose the facility in Draper, it will have a humongous impact on all the beef producers and the dairymen in Utah. If we don't have a facility that can take those cows and bulls and, and grind those cattle, we'll have to ship them out of state. There's only one other facility in the state, in the northern part of the state, that could handle some of those. And we're, we're very, very, uh, interested in trying to help any processor in the state expand or, or, uh, build new facilities or expand existing facilities. Currently, Farm Bureau is working with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Utah Department of Ag and Food, and the Commissioner of Agriculture and Utah State University to try to determine, how do we address some of these processing bottlenecks in the state? And if we do not have processing capabilities within the state of Utah, we're extremely concerned about the future of livestock production within the state. There are several companies that we work with. One of them is Circle Four Farms, have a big hog facility in, uh, Millard County and other counties in the state. They're talking about building facilities. They would love to do it in Utah. But with the opposition that we get, even from our rural counties, it's really difficult for a company like that to build a processing facility in the state. So, they're talking about going to Mexico or, or other places outside of Utah to do the processing. The problem that we have as an industry, as an ag industry, is we're raising commodities. So, you raise cattle, in this case, you, you know, you raise a beef calf up till fall, and they're maybe 550 pounds. They get put on a truck and they get exported to another state like Kansas or Nebraska for finishing. And then somebody else, uh, takes those, those animals, they slaughter them, and they put them into packages that are value-added. And then it has to be trucked back to the state of Utah. For the governor and for the Department of Ag and Food and for all of our producers, that's a big concern, because we've been operating at a loss for a number of years. So, when we have facilities like the Smiths, who can come in and have the kind of experience that they do, the, the, the capability of us to continue agriculture in the state is so much greater than having an outside company come in or a small startup company try to, try to begin a processing facility. I currently, Farm Bureau, in the last eight months, has purchased a facility in Ogden. So, I'm running a small facility where we process meat, um, beef, pork, and, um, some lamb up there. And one of the biggest challenges is to find skilled workers in this industry. The, the 50-year ago model, where we had a whole bunch of ma and paws, doesn't exist anymore. For us to find skilled labor and folks that can run those facilities, it's all but impossible to do. And the Smiths is one of the two families in the state that has the experience to do this. We highly encourage you to work with them and, and any other producers that want to process in the state. It's, it's very beneficial for agriculture. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Neff, excuse me, my name is Rex Larson. And I've been here in the Spanish Fork area just a few months more than he has, so...
Just a few, just a couple months.
So, uh, our family's been here for 152 years. And, uh, I think our family has been utilizing Dale Smith Packing since, since they started. My grandfather, my father, and now myself. As Brett mentioned, agriculture infrastructure is critical to our state, to our well-being. Think back last year. Think of all the bottlenecks that we found out that, that we have in this state and in this nation. We, we as producers can produce a product, but we can't, as, as with evidence last year, we can't get it processed. We can't get it to the grocery store shelves. Think of those empty shelves. This is a way to enlarge and strengthen that ag infrastructure that we have, that we need in this state. It's, uh, I think it's a good fit. I remember the slogan for this city was something like the livestock capital of the West. Yeah. Uh, now we're pride and progress, and I love that. Uh, that, uh, our, our past discussion, I'm still wondering about if that's progress as I pull my tractor out on 8,000 South and can't go anywhere. But, uh, uh, so I, I encourage you to highly support this zone change and this opportunity for this area, uh, to, to strengthen agriculture, to provide food security for each one of you and for us, uh, as, as consumers in this area, uh, so that we don't have those bottlenecks and those challenges, uh, getting, uh, products from the producer to you as consumers. And so, I, I highly recommend you that you give this very favorable consideration. This is a good family. They've been in business forever and, and I'm, and representing good old Spanish Fork boy here. I, I, I want you to give it very high consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Rex. It's an old classmate.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Don't get, he looks a little nervous. I'm not as rowdy as I used to be.
Okay.
You know, it's good to be here tonight. I was just, I...
State your name for the...
Oh, my name's Wit Hill. And I'm probably the closest neighbor and homeowner that will be next to this property that's being talked up tonight in the zone change. First of all, I want to say I appreciate all the comments that everybody stands up here and says, you know... I said last, a few weeks ago in the planning and zoning, I said, you know, if I could... I've lived on this property for almost 50 years. And I said, you know, back then, I said, if I could take it back, I sure would. I mean, I wish I could go browsing around like we used to. But all you good people have made this city so nice. All these guys want to come here. So, first of all, to speak of the zone change, as you can see around, we've, it all is, it all is industrial area. I think that's inevitable. That's what's going to be there. You know, and to speak a little bit, I think tonight I'd like to speak a little bit on behalf of the way my dad, Jerry Hill, made the decision, which he's probably taught some of you guys up here in school. But the way he, uh, made the decision to sell, sell this property, you know, I, me, I've, I've made a living in the cattle business my whole life. I've followed my dad around when I was little and took off. And I loved the cattle and ranching business. I worked at both auctions my whole childhood. And through that, I've watched this city change. And as we sat down as a family and talked about the zone change and the opportunity to have this family come here and build this great facility, you know, it was a way that, you know, my dad, he's going to go kicking and screaming. He hate, he hates it. He wished he could stay there forever, but we can't. And it was a way for us, as a family, to say, you know what? We're going to put our thumbprint on this amazing facility, and we're going to be able to offer this to Spanish Fork City with this piece of ground that my dad's pieced together and all this neat stuff that he's done and worked hard for his whole life. It's a way for us to keep agriculture in this area, because it's just not what it used to be. And I, and I'm good with that. I, I'm, I'm impressed with what this city's doing. I, I'm, I'm impressed with what this city's doing and how it's growing and how it's offering all this opportunity. And so number one, I'd like to say please take a good look at that zone change. It is, I mean, we're surrounded. And number two, I hope that gives you a feel for the way. And I just wanted you all to know as a family how much we want this facility. We want to be part of the beef business. We love the cattle business. We love agriculture and it's a way to keep that in Spanish Fork City, which that's what Spanish Fork City's always been. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Whit.
Thanks, Whit.
I just had a quick comment on this.
Well, you got to state your name again. It's.
Yeah. Uh, my name's Russell Porter. Uh, this is just an amazing coincidence to be able to talk about this. I come from a family of veterinarians. Uh, we're kind of aware more of, uh, some of the agriculture themes. Uh, many people don't know this, but most of the agriculture in the U.S. comes under four or five major companies. JBS, Conagra, um, Lehman Brothers and a few others. Um, I don't know all of them, but all of those are extremely stressed out. They've, they're all still having problems. JBS just had a major shutdown last week, the largest meat producer in the entire world. Uh, some of these others have had, uh, bank bailouts with the government and, uh, the current, uh, U.S. presidency is not likely to be very helpful with these groups in the future. It is worth it for Spanish Fork to be, uh, involved in a project like this. The trend for agriculture is that a lot of these companies are moving south towards Juve County, Emmerich County, but Spanish Fork is positioned on the eastern corridor for the highways and the northern and south corridor. That means that they, even if some of that business does go south, you're still in a position to provide stability and help these people. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Anyone else? Giving a little extra time this time. Thank you for not getting up here, Brian. I'd entertain a motion to go, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any comments or discussions?
So are you going to have a counter for customers to come like you do in Riverton? Or is it going to be wholesale?
Matthew Smith. So our goal is to eventually have a retail shop there. As we just had a, uh, early on discussions with, uh, City Manager David, Dave Anderson, uh, we talked to him about the opportunity of having, um, a place where residents could come and purchase, uh, products from us. So yes, we would like that opportunity.
You're next. And I don't know that this is the time nor the place, but based on the discussion that took place with the commission, um, some of the issues to me that wasn't addressed concerning a pack plant coming in here. So his comment was, right now they do seventy thousand. They hope to do five hundred a day, which raises that to a hundred and twenty thousand, which essentially brings anywhere from three thousand to four thousand large trucks and/or vehicles into this neighborhood, which is an area that is stressed right now and we have a problem with getting in and out of it anyway. So the traffic, and that really wasn't, I, I think there was one person that discussed that there was one, you know what, if I kill a fly and you guys. He's been bothering me all night, but I'm going to get him. So if I, if you hear a big bang, it's because of that. The, the traffic is, is a large concern because those are large trucks. And if they're not the large trucks, they're goosenecks. So you're going to have ten goosenecks versus a large truck. Most large trucks haul about forty or fifty cows. So the traffic into this area is what, what concerns me about him growing and continuing to grow. The other thing is that I never heard anybody talk about the impact on Spanish Fork, on our, uh, infrastructure, our electric, our water, and especially our sewer plant. We are building a new sewer plant and that does have the ability to be expanded, but a packing plant of this size and processing was not part of that discussion. So I would like to, and I'm, I'm not, I'm okay with moving this to industrial zone, but I, I want some of these questions answered before I say yes to this packing plant because, that is an, that's a huge pack, that's a huge impact on Spanish Fork City, traffic and the other. And over my thirty or forty years, I've probably delivered to probably every pack plant, most of them in Utah, and most of them are gone. I know they are. A little one, I was upset when the one in Hiram sold out to a big business and that worries me a little bit that if that happens down here and they improve their process and move what's in Riverton down here, that, that, I hope that that then, because they get things and some of these big companies walk in and then they want to buy you out now because you're doing a nice thing. I hope that doesn't happen. I hope it stays a family business. But those traffics and impact on the city, I, I would like to hear them. They were not discussed in the commission. Like I said, that is, and, and we do have plans to improve in and, in and out on this. Currently with, uh, Wausau's pallets is coming in. Of course, all their, they're going to probably receive their stuff by rail, but everything that goes out will be by truck. You have several construction companies, Sorensen's, R and B, D and D, that are right there in the area. R and B's moving in and building two brand-new buildings, which will increase the traffic. So there's nothing going to trade for it. I know we don't build roads and I know development improves those roads. And I, can you go back to the, the, the plan that showed the, that? So I'm assuming that's lining up with the road that's going out to Main Street. Do you know?
It does not line up. That road will come through, uh, just to the south of, I think that's where Mr. Hill lives. So it'll come through there.
So it's going, no, it'll come down here farther. That'll come right.
This is, this is the northern boundary of the PDM Steel.
Oh, okay.
Site here with that.
Oh, so right there.
Yeah, so it'll come.
Okay, so, okay. Anyway, I, so before I say yes to the, those amendments that you're going to bring, I, I'd like to see some kind of address because that is a huge, a huge impact with the traffic and, and I just would like to know how it's, I, I'm sure they've, I think Brandon went out with them and talked about with our engineers and our impact on a processing plan and what it will have on our thing, but I, I think we should know that.
And if I may, I think a zone change application is an appropriate time to discuss those things that you just described. And we as staff have talked about those issues with the applicant. This is a part of the community, but right now we really do have pretty robust utility capacity. Power substation in the vicinity, different things like that, big sewer line, um, access to water and those sorts of things. Um, incidentally, this particular facility, uh, any of the, the, I guess, liquid effluent that they produce, that will go into the city's sanitary sewer system. It will be contained, uh, one hundred percent. Um, and with that, they will be required to pre-treat that like some of our other industrial users do before it goes into the system so that it doesn't, that's how I look at it, you know, kind of tip over our wastewater treatment plant and cause operational issues there. The applicants are very well aware of what those expectations are and, uh, they're working with, um, a development group that we've worked with before, that I think, uh, certainly has a very high level of credibility. In terms of traffic, I think it's interesting that based on the numbers that they've given us for the, the, the number of trucks that need to come in, even to deliver five hundred head of cattle, you know, it's, it's maybe between twelve and fifteen, you know, probably less than twenty on a given day is my, I'm, I'm taking their word for it there. You know, so maybe let's say fifteen trucks coming in and, and let's say the same number leaving. That is not a traffic concern. Who knows what might happen on the other lots? You know, that's maybe the wild card in terms of what we're looking at right here, but, um, I do appreciate you bringing those issues up and it's at least a good reminder to be particularly with the applicant in getting prepared before we're back before you again.
Okay.
Well, the nice thing is we've had big trucks going down this road for years, you know, and, you know, they've, they'll come out and go out that way. And so, and we've had a lot of trucks go down this road. I know, I follow them a lot. So we've, we've been able to handle a lot of those big trucks that have gone through and, and, uh, so with the improvement of what we're doing here, I think that just enhances our traffic.
Chad mentioned, we met out there, I believe it was more than a year ago with the Hills and a couple of the Smith brothers, Dave. Two or three of our engineers, Jim Johnson, Mike Clark, and, uh, discussed a lot of those issues and, and, uh, yeah, seeing, seeing no opposition here tonight during the public hearing, I'm inclined to move to approve ordinance Z-ten dash twenty-one, G-three zone change. Proposal involves changing the zoning of a property located approximately twelve hundred north, three hundred west from rural residential to industrial one, based on the following finding. The proposal is consistent with the city's general plan, land use designation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
All right. That passes. Closer to home. Ordinance Z-eleven dash twenty-one, Kim Pierce, zone change.
Before Mr. Hill leaves, it'd be probably the last time, I mean, the joke with Mr. Hill and Rod Dart sitting up here as a councilman was at least I didn't have Rod as a fourth grade teacher, but I had Mr. Hill. That was said on a regular basis. You should just know that.
Yeah.
They were just average students.
Exactly right.
They're good young men. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Hill.
See you, Rex. All right.
Maple Mountain High School is just east of the subject property, that long skinny, uh, parcel. It was recently purchased by its neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Pierce, who own this property. They reside here. They, um, did, uh, a portion of a development of this property just a few years ago. And with that, we asked them to show how this property could be developed potentially, given how a street would be constructed in their project. And that was done so that, uh, the majority of this property in the future wouldn't be left landlocked, if you will. That all being said, the idea that, uh, now the Pierce's own this property, you know, along with what they've had for some time, just next to it to the west, I, I think is, is, uh, certainly going to make for a very smooth future land use transition when at whatever point in time they decide that they want to stop farming. Here on, on the north part of, uh, what they've owned and to develop both that and this property. The idea that the zoning would be changed, which really now just enables them to subdivide an existing home here and to convey that separately from the rest of the parcel, uh, with a twelve thousand square foot lot. That's, that's really the impetus for this. So, uh, I guess this is a better image to use. The idea that, uh, the zoning would be changed from rural residential to match what in essence surrounds the subject property, property but for, you know, again, the Maple Mountain site seems to me to be about as easy as it gets. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that the change to R-one-twelve be approved.
Great. This is a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public would like to come address this zone change? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments or questions?
So Dave, he's, that, I mean, we're, we're changing the zoning just to match the other, but you said he's going to develop the existing house?
He, he simply wants to subdivide the existing home here and to sell that on an individual quarter acre lot.
Okay. Where it's attached to all.
Yes, and he'd retain the remaining part of it.
Okay.
I think he has a family member that, uh, either has built or is planning on building next to it.
Yeah, there's a home there already, so that, okay.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance Z-eleven dash twenty-one, Kim Pierce, zone change. The proposal involves changing the zoning of the property located approximately twenty-one hundred east, one hundred south from rural residential to R-one-twelve.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All, but this is going to be a roll call. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
That passes. Ordinance Z-twelve twenty-one, Joe Warren's zone change.
Seven acres located on the northwest corner of Mill Road and Arrowhead Trail. Heading out towards the Salem Benjamin Interchange. I just personally really appreciate Mr. Warren bringing forth this application, which would change the zoning from rural residential to commercial. Uh, he's been marketing the property for quite some time and, uh, the vast majority of the proposals that we've seen as staff have not been consistent with the city's general plan, which identifies all corners of this intersection as potentially future sites for some type of non-residential development, some type of commercial, uh, probably a combination of retail and professional office uses and that type of a thing. We've had people propose everything from storage units to apartments to some crazy combinations of the two. Uh, Mr. Warren now is simply interested in, uh, marketing the property, uh, for commercial uses. This particular change, I think, does a, uh, a great service to the community in terms of, um, assigning zoning that's consistent with the general plan and helping Mr. Warren market the property as such. So, uh, both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have recommended that the proposed zone change be approved. At this point in time, we do not have any, any even conceptual development proposals for the property.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Our motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that would like to talk about this zone change? You're welcome.
Come on, Matt, come talk about it.
He's good. All right. Seeing, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance Z-twelve dash twenty-one, Joe Warren's zone change. The proposal involves changing the zoning of a property located approximately fifteen hundred south, Arrowhead Trail, from rural residential to commercial two, based on the following finding. One, that the proposal is consistent with the city's general plan, land use designation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. Roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes. Ordinance eleven dash twenty-one, revising of the transportation element of the general plan.
Okay, th- this mostly has some trail changes, which I'll just go through quickly. Also, some transportation changes, kind of in the area that we were just discussing with Smith Meat, so I think that's a bit timely. The first one is trying to figure out where to get this trail connection through. At the south end of town, you have Volunteer Drive right here. What, finally, after several meetings with the Development Review Committee, the feeling was we didn't really want it behind a big commercial site here, uh, like it shows here. And, and feeling that Main Street is probably a long time in the future as that redevelops, but once it does redevelop, we, we think it, this would be a good connection. And then the other, the other connection was moved out to, to this location right here. So this goes away. You have one on Main Street and one here. Any questions on that? Okay, next one. This, these are some interesting changes to the trails plan. Basically, it just moves all these trails on the inside of the road so that there's a loop here that, uh, you wouldn't really have to cross any major roads. Any questions on that? Thanks. This is kind of a big one, um, that we're going to skip and talk about, talk about at the end. We'll talk about that at the end. Okay. Next one is fourteen hundred east. Next one is fourteen-hundred east, is now developing, and so, after surveying it quite a bit and looking at where a trail could run, we, we already will have it to here. There's quite a bit of what we call double frontage lots, where since the planters in someone's backyards, they don't really maintain it very well, and so, the idea being is let's continue on through those, and then jump across where you have a church and, and some other double frontage lots down here, and then connect into existing trail here. So, this is just a change from the master plan update.
I have a couple, I've had a couple people ask me, why is that asphalt on fourteen-hundred east and not just a normal sidewalk, as they're building it?
Right here?
Yeah.
Because this trails plan, connecting to, you know, we have the trails going around this, this all abilities part, you know, heading down Canyon Road, there, there's a need to connect to this trail here.
I guess they, they just asked me, and I figured it would have been cement to match everything on fourteen-hundred. It just looks off. I just wonder.
It's a trail. It's hard on my legs.
But it stops like halfway through fourteen-hundred, asphalt, and then it goes to cement.
We're trying to remedy that.
You mean right, right here?
Yeah, where they're building.
Oh, well, the sidewalk was already existing.
Right.
Before the trails plan came to be, so. Okay, any other questions about that?
No, sir.
But eventually, it would be a paved trail all the way down. So, the sidewalk would be removed, and you would have trail down to here, and then it would jump across here. Okay, so next. This is, this is kind of probably the most significant change in this master plan, and that is, if you look, this railroad track, right here, kind of in the northwest part of town, let me get some bearing, here's, here's I-15, okay, and here's Third West. That development that just came in with Smith Meats is right here, okay? In the past, we planned for the arterial to, this orange, to come through here and, and go out to West Mountain. The problem is, right here, we have a situation where four roads all come in right at railroad tracks, it's a very dangerous intersection. At first, we wanted to put, Cross the Arms in all four directions there, and, and have them all come down at the same time, train goes by, and then they all go up. We met with Union Pacific, and with UDOT, which has jurisdiction over railroad crossings, and did an analysis there, and were told that there would be no way that that would be granted, which makes this a very poor place to have an arterial road. And so, what this master plan change proposes is to move this arterial up to nineteen-hundred north, as you see here. And then it comes in, there's, there's actually a collector road that kind of runs up at an angle here, out in the county, and one here, and so, this would be a large five, five road roundabout, right here. And, and basically, this works a lot better. It takes, you, you can't quite see it off the screen, but the main street actually crosses a railroad and then gets here, so this road would have no railroad crossings. So, it's a lot, a lot better route for an arterial. And it actually splits, right now, you have, you have the airport here, and you have the new interchange coming in here at twenty-seven-hundred north. And, and so, if you'll look at our overall transportation master plan, every interchange connects to an arterial going out to the west. But, that's impossible to do for twenty-seven-hundred north, because twenty-seven-hundred north would run right into the airport. So, this gets us as close as we possibly can, running along the south side, as, as close as we possibly can to get to twenty-seven-hundred north. Any questions about that? Just kind of, okay.
Long future, near future, that one?
Uh, it kind of depends on annexations in this area.
Okay.
So, this, this is what our plan originally was, but this is what is actually being built with all the industrial in that area, so we're just adjusting the plan to match what's being built. They needed, this is, this is the big eighty acres that, we, we call it Project Aggie, but, that.
Disneyland's coming there, right?
Exactly. So, lots of stuff going in here, but this is what actually is being built, so this is just fixing that. Okay, next. Stop me if you have any questions. This is the old trails plan, and this is the new one. We color coded it so that you could more easily see some of the prominent trails. All of our collector and arterial roads have a trail on one side and sidewalk on the other, so that creates a lot of more trails. They're, they're more for commuting than they are for recreational a lot of times, but we found that a trail costs very similar to what a sidewalk costs, so it does take five extra feet, but it creates a nice connectivity for all, all the trails in town, so. One, one other thing that has been a big concern for us is, you can see the eventual airport growth area, and, and there's something called the RPZ zone, which where you can't have anything, building, parking lot, or anything, in, in the airport runway buffer zone. And so, our concern got to be, as, as development was occurring over here, is, we, we don't want to touch that, and so, we actually added that to the transportation element of the general plan, so that we knew we wouldn't encroach on where we wanted the airport to go someday. Now, we are beginning to study what this really needs to be, and make sure it's accurate. I guess airplanes are getting, are becoming lighter, and they're able to, the big airplanes are able to land on a smaller runway, and so, we're not going to make that runway any longer than it needs to be, if, if the future for airplanes is, they don't need the longer runways. And so, we're, we're acquiring a, a engineering firm that specializes in airport runways to, to look at that. But currently, that's what it is, and we added it to the transportation master plan. Any questions on that? Okay, next. This just talks about that. Okay, so, there's, there's that other drawing that I promised we would get to. It should be an aerial. Okay. So, our original master plan was, you know, you have the North Park Trail that comes around, and it wraps around here where Arctic Circle is, and then was going to cross, and originally, the master plan called for it to go straight through this parking lot, and then along I-15 and connect to here. One of our experiences up here at North Park is, there's an area behind buildings that is pretty attractive to homeless people, and, and a lot of people don't feel safe there. It's behind buildings between I-15 and I-6, and, and so, the thought was, is we'd rather not create that again here, and, and we have a UDOT grant, and Mountainlands Association of Government grant, to rebuild and beautify Main Street through here, coming up in the next couple of years. And so, the thought was, is a trail plan could be integrated into that, as, and, and then, there's quite a bit of rideaway here, where we could maybe do something similar to what we did on Powerhouse Road, over by Canyon View Park, and then, when this develops, have the trail going here, and then that creates a connectivity out to the, the west part of town, of town as it develops, so.
I'd like that, because finally, we get a sidewalk on that.
Yeah, right now, there is no, there's nothing right there, so.
Who's in charge of that? Your first year, I can't be wrong.
So, anyway, those, those are all the, the proposed changes.
Wow, thank you. Thank, all right, this is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're in public hearing. Anyone that would like to talk about this trail system or the exchange revision to transportation? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve revision of the transportation element of the general plan.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. Roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
All right. Fiscal year 2021 budget revision number three. Budget at nine o'clock? Gosh, how much money do you need?
Actually, less is the right answer. So, tonight, I have, last week, we had a whole bunch of discussion, two weeks ago, on budget, and tonight is the approval of a couple of budgets. I've got five different budgets to do tonight, so hang on to the edge of your seat for some budget discussion. The first one, you're going to have a public hearing on revising the, the budget we're in right now, 2021. It's the final revision number three, as we get to the, into the year, and I do have, I've, I've emailed you this document also, if you want to look at that on your email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to save confusion, this one is on white paper. You'll find out, as we do the other budgets, they'll be on a different colored paper, so we'll make sure we're talking about the right, the right document. This document is the revision of the current year budget. It's, if you look on your first sheet, on page one, the, the second to the last column on the side, on the end, is the revision three, you can see that column, and you can see the difference is, it's actually reducing the budget by almost $2 million. So, there are some projects that will not be completed this year, and as we review those, we adjusted the budget down. In the general fund, there are some expenses that need to be adjusted up, so the general fund increased $486,000, you see that top number on the, on the last column, and the rest of the enterprise funds are decreasing $2 million, so it has a net of around 1.9 million in a decrease. So, basically, it's a decrease in a budget revision, except for in the general fund, it is a slight increase. So, we have an opportunity for the public to, if they'd like to talk about this.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone that would like to come and talk about this budget revision number three? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve fiscal year 2021 budget revision number three.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Okay. That's one of five?
This is all for right now, I'll be back.
Oh, you're done?
For the first one.
Thank you.
Public hearing one.
Oh, great, thank you. We're out of public hearing, finally.
Is Dave doing this one?
All right, let's move to new business, item B, Diane Cruz fence height approval request. Who would like to talk on that?
Let's begin, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To construct a fence that's taller than six feet in Spanish Fork, the city council's approval is required. So, as has happened before, we're here tonight, Ms. Cruz has requested the ability to construct a fence in her backyard. You'll notice maybe that the correspondence that I provide, it's pretty succinct, it's for security purposes, and because of that, I've been pretty, I've, I've tried to be pretty careful about what to share and maybe what to, to leave out. But, we have had somebody from our office go out and visit the property and look at exactly what Ms. Cruz would like to do. We're entirely comfortable with where she would like to construct what, in fact, would be a masonry wall on certain portions of her property line. I'll just note, and we haven't met, so I'm not entirely sure that is. Great, I thought that might be her. I'll just mention that, along with our recommendation for the council to approve your request to be able to go taller than six feet, I'd just note that you would still apply for a building permit to build the fence, so that's where we, we'd make sure that everything does match any of the other city standards that come into play. Those are free, no charge, we just want to make sure it gets put in the right place. But with that being the case, we have no reservations about recommending that her request be approved.
How much fire do we know?
Up to eight feet tall in one portion, and maybe even, maybe I'll let you address that if you want.
You're welcome, come on up here.
Okay. Bless your heart, have you been?
You have endured.
That's what I was just going to say.
Three hours of city council.
I'm sorry, we should have moved you up quicker.
No, you're fine. So, from the time that we first sent our proposal to Mr. Anderson until now, we've, we've kind of revised things as we've talked about logistics. So, in order to build the fence that we need to build, we have to put some concrete footings in, and in order to do that, we have to take out the railroad ties that are currently retaining the lawn there, which means we've, we've sunk lower as base than what we had originally thought. And so, we're actually asking for a ten-foot fence ultimately, which net is going to work out, because the neighbor's lawn, the neighbor that the security reason is for, is raised with a retaining wall on theirs by a good three feet above, and, and so, the ten feet will allow for essentially a seven-foot wall. And because in the incident in question, when he was inebriated and high, he jumped a six-foot fence on the other side and broke it to Schmitherines, and so, a seven-foot is really a minimum necessary to keep him from coming back into our yard, if that ever happens again.
Great, thank you.
I move to approve Diane Cruz fence height approval request. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go build your fence.
Thank you.
After anybody that could sit through all this, you deserve to build that fence. All right. Let's go to item C, resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, personal personnel policy changes.
Mayor and council, once every about six months, we update the personnel policy, and this time, we updated six sections, and we're proposing that we update six sections and, and add one. Among the changes, one of them has to do with harassment, and we changed a term that only talked about employees harassing other employees, so that it encompasses all people, regardless of whether you're an employee or not. Another section about nondiscrimination, we added, we specifically spelled out some protected classes that are in the state code, and then also made reference to the state code in there. We updated our drone policy, our funeral leave policy, and added a section on service animals in the workplace. I think you've had access to those changes. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Thanks.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, personal policy changers, personnel policy changes.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All, this will be a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All, this will be a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
That passes. All right, let's go to D, mobile fence force memorandum, understanding. There's the man, officer friendly.
Yes. So this MOU details the police department's involvement in the mutual aid mobile field force. And this will allow the allied agencies to assist one another during the course of a civil unrest or other major incident. The mobile field force is comprised of officers from every agency in Utah County in addition to the Wasatch County Sheriff's Office and the Heber City Police Department. The involved agencies have assigned two to three officers depending on the size of the agency. And the officers must complete a 24-hour training session initially, and then eight-hour quarterly sessions after that. Officers are equipped with the appropriate equipment for crowd control and violent protests. This will allow for an organized and highly trained response if this situation should arise, so. And within that mobile field force, there's a public order unit which consists of 30 officers. These individuals have additional training and equipment. And the personnel in the public order unit, they would be used to make arrests during any incidents of a civil unrest. We've currently assigned three individuals to the mobile field force. Two of our officers are assigned to the public order unit. And we've spent about $7,000 worth in equipment to equip these three officers. So this will be a great asset should the need ever arise. If we need to dispatch a mobile field force unit, they'll be organized and well-trained. So if you've reviewed that and have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Anybody got any questions?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Approve mobile field force memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item E, Hay Wayne Drive right-of-way agreement. Hand out the big gun.
Mayor and council, if you'll notice on the screen, there's the railroad that goes diagonally through the middle of the screen. And just to the right is Hay Wayne Drive with some lots platted there. At the end of that, the south end, you can see that it didn't go all the way to the property line. Those two lots, one on the left and one on the right side of the road, didn't get platted. And, and the road didn't extend to the southern property. The southern property owner is now trying to develop and needs that access to that public street. So this agreement would have Fieldstone Homes convey that right-of-way that they need to link to that southern property immediately with signing of this agreement. And then the agreement also allows for the, either the city or that developer to the south to develop that road improvements so they can get access to their property. And then Fieldstone would reimburse that constructing party for those improvements. It also gives Fieldstone the option to construct it as well if they decide to plat those last two lots, and they can do the improvements themselves. So I recommend that you approve the Hay Wayne Drive right-of-way agreement. Any questions on that?
And seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve Hay Wayne Drive right-of-way agreement.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item F, establishing procedure to fill vacancy on city council.
There's a vacancy?
We don't care.
What? Where's the vacancy?
Okay. As we all know, Councilmember Scobes is resigning after today. The procedure in the resolution that you have today is based on the state code procedure, but elaborates on that. And the aim was to settle questions about procedure and areas where it might have been ambiguous in the state code to kind of flush those out and have those set forth, so there's no confusion tomorrow is the hope. It requires the applicants to physically attend the meeting, and it requires interviews. The interviews will go as follows. There will be three questions, and there will be allowed two minutes each for those questions for each of the applicants. Follow-up questions are also allowed at one per council member or mayor at one minute each. So with the number of applicants we have and, and those number of questions and the time allotted, it could be a long meeting tomorrow. Which is just fine because it's an important decision.
It's a going-away gift.
After all the interviews, then the procedure is to have two votes. And the first vote is, is for each council member to tab, or to rank their top three. Their top, their top person they vote for gets three points, second gets two, and third place gets one. And as we get those votes from each of you, then we'll tabulate those, and we need to identify the top two vote-getters. The top two vote-getters will then advance to a second vote. And that'll just be a roll call vote where you say on the record, I vote for A or I vote for B. There's also contingencies in the procedure for if there's ties, or if there's one person that's clearly ahead, but then all the second and third place are tied, or, or if three people are tied, you know. So there's contingencies for those things, those scenarios. And then finally, if there's a tie of the voting, the mayor can, can vote to break that tie. If, if for some reason, somebody's absent tomorrow and, and we're still tied even with, after the vote, then there's a procedure by choosing by lots, and that would be to draw a high card out of a deck. So any, any questions on that, that procedure?
Are you bringing the deck?
We will have a deck of cards, just in case.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Any questions on this? I would entertain a motion to approve establishing procedure to fill the vacancy on city council.
Along with my motion, I'll just say the candidates that, here at the meet the candidates, or what do we call it, candidate orientation last week. And I being part of that, good group of people, so excited to echo what Stacy already said today, but good group of people to pick from and excited to hear, hear them do their thing, so. I move to approve establishing procedure to fill vacancy on city council.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 21-15, establishing procedure to fill vacancy, oh.
Online ticketing portal.
Wait a minute, how come, oh, I missed that. Okay, resolution 21-12, authorizing the finance director to sign SF City Ticks agreements. Sorry, I didn't cross off the one.
No problem. Mayor and council, we, we have often other entities outside of the city that want to use our SF City Ticks ticket portal to sell tickets for their, for their event. Rather than bringing this kind of routine agreement to you every time for approval, this resolution would give that authority to assign that agreement to the finance director. That's basically it. We do that in other areas, like water rights and things like that, but any questions on that?
Kent, can you handle that?
For two more.
Ooh.
I, I have one statement that has come up twice in the last week. And then I talked to Angie Warner down at the fairgrounds today about it. And this is something that I didn't, maybe this has been going on for a while, Dale, but this is the first year I've heard of it. There are ticket companies buying up some tickets and then reselling them on the internet that are different ticket companies, not SF City Ticks. And some people have paid as much as 50 to $100 per ticket. Thinking, and then coming to me saying, hey, I realized the city, you know, probably didn't do as good last year for the rodeo. I'm like, we did pretty well for having the only rodeo in COVID. But those people really thought that we were charging, I mean, I'm looking at tickets here on SF City Ticks just for the public. That's $14.50. The best you can get, $17.50.
Go, go to Google and just search Spanish Fork yesterday's rodeo.
We don't pop up.
What happens is if somebody, XYZ ticket seller, one pays a search engine optimization, right? So they pay to get their name at the top. Wait, wait, no, that's perfect.
Click on the top one?
No, don't, 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 don't click on it. But you'll notice right here, this word. And this is not us, this word, this is not us, this is not us, that's us. And, and you're absolutely right, 75 bucks.
No way.
Yeah. So it's, it's not uncommon for people to have that, to have that question, what the heck, Spanish Fork? And, and they need to go through the city's website. Yeah. There's nothing we can do to stop it, but.
No, that's a common practice. It's used in marketing a lot, legal, or I guess ethical marketing, as the SEOs.
People want more.
That's a lot of tickets they're doing this year if people are picking up that much, so.
Can we put a note on there or something that makes sure you're on Spanish Fork website when purchasing tickets?
It only matters if they are on Spanish Fork website to read that.
We do another public service.
Do that on their website?
Could we get the mayor on another horse to do a public service?
Only if it's a taller horse.
I think, I think Nick sold that horse. All right.
Sorry, I got us sidetracked, but.
There you go. So.
I move to approve resolution 21-12, authorizing the finance director to sign SF City Ticks agreements.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 21-20, approving interlocal agreement with Utah County for the file mine.
Mayor and council, this one is for the legal department. I do a lot of stuff for other departments, but this one is for us. We have a case management software that is ending. It's going to go dark July 1, so we need a new one. And we, we contract right now with, with Utah County, Springville and Payson. And the county is switching the provider to a different software. And we need to have an interlocal agreement with the county and these other cities to, to share those costs. And they're based on our caseload. So our case, so the cost is basically the same, except there is a one-time fee of, to migrate the data from the old software to the new software. And this is a case management that is really necessary for our prosecutors to keep all our cases straight and tracking. So I recommend you approve the interlocal agreement with Utah County.
Any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve 21-20, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County for file mine prosecution case management software.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. 311, agreement with AT&amp;T.
We just do a motion to approve?
There he is.
Why, you made it in the nick of time. Stacy.
So the, the item on your agenda tonight is an agreement with AT&amp;T to establish 311 with them. So I just wanted to give a brief history because we'll see some more agreements that'll come in consent as we get those other agreements with carriers. So what is 311? The number 311, it's an abbreviated dialing code similar to 411, 811, or 911, created by the FCC in 1997 as a non-emergency number reserved for municipalities. So we are in our lane to use this. It's to do service requests like a missed garbage can or an issue in the street, any non-emergency number, or just to ask some questions that you may have throughout the city. So if you're within the city boundaries, you can call 311. It's geographically based, and you call that number instead of dialing 801, 804, 4500, which although is easy to remember, it's, that's still a 10-digit number. So if you're in the city and you call 311, you'll get the city number once we have these agreements in place with all of the carriers. So each phone carrier or provider has to have in place the system to set it up where if you to call 311, they will transfer it to our termination number. So the AT&amp;T one is the first one that's ready. And on your agenda tonight, this starts a six-month timeline for them to get this ready. So if you have AT&amp;T as your network, within the next six months, you'll be able to call 311 and get ahold of our utility office to get any questions answered. We're still working with, with the other phone providers to get, you know, their agreements and to get that number for them, and continuing to work on our implementation plan as to, you know, if we have a call center or what other individuals would take these calls. We anticipate that we might get some more calls through 311 because it's a lot easier. Room is one of those barriers to maybe get an answer to a question. So with that said, staff recommends approval of the AT&amp;T agreement.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve 311 agreement with American Telephone and Telegraph.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
What was that again?
That's old school.
AT&amp;T.
Well, I know, but I.
American Telephone and Telegraph.
We still have telegraphs.
Was that too, so.
I'll send him that.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fiscal year 2022 budget. Ooh, thank you. Kind of like a bad cold.
Not that I'm bored. What's that?
I'm just kidding.
You guys.
Thank you.
But it's very interesting.
Standing up to take my place.
I think I ordered the wrong thing, can you go get me something different?
I will soon enjoy it.
Just kidding. Do you know what a reviver is? Is it a reviver, an energy drink?
Blue paper. All right.
So this is next year's budget. We've had, we had the budget presented the first meeting in May. We've went a month for public input. We've had a public hearing last council meeting. And tonight is the adoption of the budget for next year. It will begin on July 1. Since the original budget was presented, it's been on the city website that the public could view. If you turn to page one, this kind of summarizes what changed since that very first document. And we'll implement these into the new document and put the new, new document on the city's webpage next, the next week or so. So you can see that the general fund only changed slightly. While the enterprise funds changed about a million seven. Most of that is for two substation transformers that we need to start the order process in order to start to get those maybe in a year from now. But we need to have some down payments and stuff paid out of this budget. So those items were not in the original budget, and that's why it's increased the 1.7 million in the enterprise fund, but it's in the electric fund is where that's at. So in essence of that, there's not any changes material from, where some cleanup in the employee tab as far as employees that have been hired or some that have left. So we've tried to update the employee tab as far as for the personnel. Other than that, it's, it's the same document that was presented in 1st of May, except for a couple of small minor changes. The material one was in the electric department. So with that, if you have any questions, it's not a public hearing today. Just letting you know where the budget is. The new budget will be presented and submitted to the state auditor within 30 days of tonight. When it's, if it gets adopted tonight, we have 30 days to send it to the state auditor and have it on our city website. One last item, I was able to receive. We've, we've had certified tax rates in the prior years, talking about holding the rate, raising the rate, a little bit like that. We did those last year, last August, we had public hearing meetings to raise the certified tax rate in order to build the library, and we did it to build the fire station also. I just received the impact of the values. I think it'd be interesting for the councils to know and for those at our home. Our community, when you're. Our community, um when your home goes up in value, which I'm sure everybody's homes went up this past year. You think, oh, I'm gonna have to pay more property tax because my house value went up. The way the state law is written for property taxes called truth in taxation is once the city has decided or has uh taxed your house for a certain dollar amount or the taxing entities, we cannot collect any more dollars from that piece of property without a public hearing. And so if your value goes up, I can still only collect that certain dollar amount from you, and as an aggregate for the whole city, it forces that rate down. And so in prior years, we said, let's hold the rate to capture that property tax to be to be used. This year, we're not holding the rate, so the rate is going to fall because most houses and most property had an increase. So last year, our certified tax rate was, I'm gonna use the number twelve. Um so point zero zero one two is what our city's uh share of that pie of property tax. With the increase in value that it went, it's now dropping, so our certified tax rate for the city is now eleven twenty nine for this next year, for the year we're in right now. Um but there's more more houses and more businesses that are that are coming to town and that have built. So if a new house is built, we as the city and the school district gets to capture the property tax, but we're gonna apply eleven twenty nine to that house, not twelve like we did last year, so we're gonna apply eleven twenty nine in a as a certified rate to capture that. So with that, our property tax revenue is increasing because of new growth, not because of you raising the the property tax rate because it's actually declining. But all of the new growth in town and our property tax revenue will increase about a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars just on new growth of homes and businesses that have been built in Spanish Fork this for this next year. So that's just an update as far as our property tax, that the there is not a property tax increase, but the rate did decrease with the this year's budget, so that's what I have. Not a public hearing, just to approve uh the budget for and the total amount is one point, let's see, a hundred and seventy two million, two hundred and thirty two thousand and fifty one dollars is what the total budget is.
Great. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty two budget.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Menon Hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh let's adjourn.
To adjourn to RDA?
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in RDA.
Do we need to approve consent?
If we have them, I don't know if we have any minutes. For that one. Before we before we do the RDA. It's nine thirty. Do you mind if we pause for a moment and and do a couple of things?
Yes.
Do you want to go back into city council?
Doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah, let's go back to city council. That way it's these aren't on the minutes for the RDA.
Okay. I move we go back into city council.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Menon Hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in city council. Tyler, it's all yours.
I'll be back.
I'll be back.
Oh, I've heard that before.
Aren't we taking a commercial break?
Yeah, I think it might be good for you guys to, does anybody need to take a? That was a quick nod. Let's take a quick moment.
It was three and a half hours ago.
Thanks for the drink, but that didn't help the problem, so.
Two minutes.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
You back on? Everybody happy? You're back? Okay, let's go. Tyler, we're turning it over to you.
All right. Well, uh we decided to change the agenda a little bit so that Kier's wonderful wife, Robin, uh could hopefully get a little bit of sleep tonight, uh as Kier might be here a while. But we we uh as the city, the uh the the administration policy allows for us to give a service award at the end of uh someone's career of service here, and as everybody knows at home already, uh Kier's service uh has come to at least, uh I guess, a short uh um hopefully just a a short uh rest, maybe in the future. He'll be back, but uh Robin was nice enough to take Kier on a date a couple of weeks back to her favorite place, the PGA Superstore.
Oh, bless your heart.
Was it?
Oh.
Why did she go that night?
I don't know.
And I thought honestly, you know, I just don't wanna go home to those kids. Is there any way that we can just go? You'll think it's fun, but I just.
And you were like, yes.
So she said that you had you had your best date ever, and she had.
I was born stiff.
Yeah, she was born stiff. But speaking of stiff, these are stiff, I think Firmflex Clubs, because that's what she said you swung and liked, so we got you a couple of clubs for your bag, and we know you love Spanish Fork swag. So each one of these, when you're out playing in DC or wherever it might be, uh we'll have the Oaks. You'll be representing Spanish Fork City, so Kier, these are for you, and they should be the clubs that you hoped for. We're grateful for uh uh Jansen at the golf course and Ryan for helping us out with these, and then there's another uh little something for you, so. Try not to uh use these until the morning probably. I wouldn't recommend teaming up on Main Street, so.
No, I.
But yeah, thank you so much, Kier.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
So you only get to take home either the clubs or the basket.
You choose.
Well, Cheryl gave that to Robin.
Nice loophole.
Really, thanks to Robin uh for being such a trooper.
Thanks.
When. She wants out. She wants to go home now. Super trooper there. When when Tyler described what Robin went through to to help us do this, I was.
Don't go anywhere yet, Robin.
It was fun. Thank you so much.
You wanna wait for a few minutes, maybe? I was gonna say a few more things.
Gordo has something that he always likes.
Anyways, I just, Robin, thanks for being a trooper on that one. It helps us helps us make a a little bit more personal, special.
All right, Gordo.
Well, I wanna go first, 'cause I wanna go.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't wanna follow that.
Was this like?
I was gonna follow this cable, okay.
Let's draw, plot the deck, parts.
Okay. Councilman Menon Hall.
I wrote something. No, I didn't write anything. I thought about writing something, but no, Kier, I mean, I've I told Kier the other night. I've only been on city council. He's been on city council the whole time I've been on city council, so I've not known city council without Kier, and just the the professionalism, the detail that you bring to the body and um and and the good work you do is just, you know, been awesome to be a part of. The cool thing that you've been for me is when getting involved with uh city politics that 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 was corresponding with state politics, and then sometimes through the League of Cities even taken it, you know, taken me to national political conferences or whatever. People knew Kier. I mean, people didn't know the mayor, but they knew Kier.
That's just right.
And so when you talked about Spanish Fork, they knew they knew we had a service member, they knew we had, but they also called you a schoolteacher and 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 a lieutenant colonel and and now a colonel and soon to be a general, so. My only, I mean, there's a lot of memories with you and and Robin and and just the good work you've done, but the one that really sticks out to me was um and I know you you care deeply about a lot of things, but you I know the men that you men and women you watch over, how much you've cared for them. The time where uh you were one of the first people I talked to after Major Mayor Taylor dying in Afghanistan. And the the military guy that he is, you can see the care that he has for people, and he had that care for obviously his family, but his care for me, you he he knew him better than I knew him, but he knew that it was me grieving about that, and so that connection of uh of us, I'll never forget, and just seeing the care that you not only had for Jenny and her seven kids and and how much they appreciated that, but um but your care for me too, and that process was really neat. So anyway, we're gonna miss you. It's gonna be a weird thing without you, and um and we're excited to get you back um if uh you know, when that when that happens, when you're when you have a different uh a different label in front of you, so I'm excited for for that, and I'm excited for your family, but thanks and love your brother for everything he's done for me.
We better let Chad go. HB four beauty.
Yeah.
So how I met Kier is not from the council. My mother and dad knew Kier. And the care he had for and the opportunity he had to talk to my stepdad, of course, of concerning war. My dad had served in World War Two and was a Bu twenty four bomber. And my mom had a great appreciation for Kier. Were you their home teachers?
I was the bishop.
There's the bishop, okay. I thank you for that because even till the day my mom, she's still, when you'd mention Kier, still, he was such a good guy. Thank you for your service to our country, um above and beyond uh the mention that you you care for our country, you serve our country. Thank you for your service to our city. Twelve years, and I used to always laugh 'cause you'd always say, I think they voted me in again. But all you had to do is walk down the street, and if you run into a fifth grader, they would tell you who their teacher was. My grandson is not happy about you leaving. My grandson says, one of his students, and when I told him, he when he mentioned it secretly, I said something to to Austin because Austin had declared war on us, on me, because I moved in with him while we were building a home, and and then Kier says, well, I'll have a talk with him, 'cause I have a thing or two that I know about war, so I'm thinking I'm gonna get in trouble between him and my boy, but thank you for being a friend. I love you. I love you and your family. You're awesome. Uh it's it's been a treat to watch you go through your your challenges. I've been a part of that. I hope you consider me a friend. Um I wish you luck back in Washington and everything you do there, and that you continue to represent our country and our city. I know you will. You do that on a daily basis, and thank you.
All right, Gordo.
All right. When I told mayor that I wanted to write a poem, he said, save it to the end of the meeting. And I said, that sounds a little bit like Kier. He'll wanna get all the work done before we sort of dote on him a little bit, but here goes my best fifth grade work, buddy. I was looking back at past elections and notes. You won your seat the first time by just eleven total votes. And now twelve years later, it's hard to believe, but your country came calling and you're going to leave. You can talk for hours without taking a drink. I admire you for always saying the words that you think. You've never backed down when someone hit a chord, even those in the basement, the warriors of keyboard. You've traveled everywhere around the globe as a soldier protecting freedoms. Thank you for your service, Colonel Scobes. The BYU Fathers and Sons Camp, you invited me and my son, showed me the ropes, and introduced me to Chad Bunn. Now in the Kiwanis, a few of us serve, I often think to myself, friends like you, I don't deserve. This deployment is going to put just a little damper on the fact that you upgraded to a really nice camper. I guess this year you'll have to throw in the towel on that trip to Southern Utah. You're not headed to Lake Powell. I don't mean to tell you all the cool things you will miss. Hanging in DC with some liberals might be bliss. I if I left for a year, my wife would be sobbing, but not your wife. She's a tough one, that, Robin. I'm impressed with her and your family and all their support. This isn't the first time she has had to hold down the fort. I hope the time flies versus going by slow. The next year, I'll save you a seat at the greatest rodeo. Spanish Fork has changed since you sat down in that seat. You once told me you'd serve until mission complete. And even though this this mission today may be done, your impact for years will bless me and my loved ones. Love you, pal.
Well, Brandon.
Look at that. One for your treasures of trash.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you. And Art would be so proud.
Well, Kier.
Years of high school.
Let me tell ya, twelve years almost together. We served uh four years together on city council and now is when I became the mayor, so I can say that I know Kier. I know his character. I know his commitment, and I know his love for this city. And uh I've thoroughly enjoyed serving with you. You know, you uh, like I say, you don't back down from a fight, and you speak your mind, and I appreciate that 'cause that's what we need here. We need to be able to stand up, and you do that not only here for the the city, but you do that for your country. And uh I appreciate you. My mom really enjoyed you. She was in his ward, and uh and so I appreciate what you've done for her, you know, bless her heart. But I'll tell you what, it's, I know I'll run into Kier because I went to Arizona to watch a football game, and who do I run into? I can't get away from him. He's there. So uh that was fu- that was fun. That was fun to run into you down there, so, you know, following those BYU Cougars, that was great. So I know you follow them there. Uh I'll probably be back in Washington uh bef- before the end of this year, so I'll look you up and we'll go get a burger, but thank you for the years. Thank you for the friendship, and I do love you, brother. I really do. I want you to know that. Thanks, Kier. All right, Robin, go home. I wanted to do all this at the first, but Seth no said no, so.
Seth wants to say something.
Oh, Seth, you wanna say something?
Well, no.
Oh, wait a minute, Robin, sorry.
You don't need to stay for this. This won't, no, you go home. I mean, I said that with love. Go home. You don't need to wait around for this. I Kier and I were chatting the other day, and and I think it's uh it it's a fun memory to think back to his first real council meeting. We had a a work session that particular year, we actually stayed in Spanish Fork, and it it didn't serve the council really well. One of the members got called into a state presidency, so we need to stay in town and.
Well, tell them what the really.
But uh Kier and I are in the room were some of the the people that didn't grow up in Spanish Fork. And and in that particular meeting, we were unveiling a year, year and a half worth of work on a a brand and logos and some pretty exciting changes. We were really super excited as staff to unveil this look and feel, and we take this group of uh fine, upstanding Spanish Fork through and through council members, minus Kier and I. Uh not on the council, but the it it to a bay and and there's this truck, and we're gonna, this is how we wanna decorate or paint and show all of our trucks, and I'm just giddy 'cause it's just cool. And Kier's right next to me, and he says something really fast, that's really cool, and then there's this stodgy old other council members who will remain nameless. It's green. And Kier, Kier is, you know, brand new freshman council member. What's wrong with that? Looks really good. It's green. And we were just like scratching our heads, oh, it matches the logo, it matches the look and feel. It's the color of the mountains. No, it's green. And we and we just all of a sudden became true experts, if you will, in color matters.
So what about the snowballs that were thrown at the truck?
I don't know anything about snowball.
There was a couple that threw the snowballs at the truck. Oh, yeah.
You only saw one green truck running around town. I think we actually still has, it's still running around town, and as long as I'm here, I think we're gonna keep that green truck running around town. And it's gonna drive up and down a few streets. I won't name ones 'cause that would identify too much, but. Anyways, that Kier and I commiserated about that, just kind of not being from Spanish Fork, but what's really interesting about it is even though he and I aren't from Spanish Fork, we've we've come to really. But what's really interesting about it is even though he and I aren't from Spanish Fork, we've, we've come to really appreciate and embrace, you know, that color matters. Uh, but that was a fun, that's a fun memory that Kier and I shared, just both kind of being new and naive.
It's a good thing we converted you.
Yeah. So anyways, a fun memory to share with Kier. Uh, uh, just from the staff's perspect- perspective, we, we've loved and appreciated you. Always having great questions and having, uh, great dialogue with us and, uh, wanting to know the why behind things and understand how the city functions. It's a wonderful thing for us to work with council members as you are, that care about the community and, and I, I'll take maybe something about Kier a step further. He talked about living in town, will round up to 20 years. But in his time living in ta- in town for 20 years and take about 12 of those on city council and his service that he mentioned, but it doesn't stop there, right? He has a few years that he served as a bishop in his local, uh, Latter Day Saint ward. A few of those years he was deployed overseas and I'm not sure, Robin, I, I, it may be all 19 of the 19 years you've lived in town that Kier's been involved in some level of service in the community, save a few months here or there. And that's a really neat characteristic about you, Kier, that, that if we can, if we could take bits and pieces of people, that's something that, that we need to take and we all need to have, just that desire to serve and not, well, the action of serving, because that's what you've done. And, and in 20 years, you know, like, we could count months on one hand probably where you haven't been actively involved in serving outside of yourself. So, thank you for that example to the community and, and, uh, that's a legacy that I think we'll live on, uh, in, you know, forever about who and how you are, so thank you.
Right, now you can go home, Robin.
Oh, you know what, Robin, just.
Hurry, get out the door, hurry, get, get, get.
Just kidding.
All right, I entertain a motion going to RDA.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Were there consent items in?
No, we didn't find any. New business. Budget.
This is, the same document was in the public hearing and everything to do with it. Uh, it's brown for this one, if you'd like to look at that. It's the RDA, it has a, a budget for this year of a million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, there are a couple of active areas that are still, uh, and there's the possibility of maybe in the, within the next year to creating a couple of new areas. Uh, but we'll bring those to you as they come up, so.
Right.
So I have, not, not a public hearing, just to adopt the budget.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Budget fiscal year 2022.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to go out of RDA.
Motion to go out of RDA.
Motion to go into LBA. Second.
Got a motion to go out by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilman Argal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to go into LBA by Councilman Mendenhall. A second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, public hearing.
Motion to, uh, I move we go into public hearing for the amended revision LBA budget fiscal year 2021.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in a public hearing.
Okay, with one of the hats you get to wear is an LBA hat, like the RDA hat. It's a special revenue fund and state auditor requires us to have our separate budget, like the RDA. And this, uh, public hearing that you have right now is, um, the LBA was created in February and we issued debt and so there is some debt and expenses that the library is starting to be built. The library over the last two years have been budgeted in a capital projects fund. And with the LBA now being established, we're moving all of, uh, the activity having to do with the library into the LBA. And to do that, it, it requires us to create a budget for 2021. And that's why we're having the public hearing right now is to create, uh, the budget for 2021 and to adopt it. And inside that budget, it has $5 million as far as the, the bond proceeds that we're spending in the construction right now. Uh, there isn't any debt service yet, that's in the next year's budget as the debt service starts. So, this is a public hearing to have any input.
Anyone in the public that would like to come up and address this item?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing.
Question. Hashtag numb. N-U-M.
Number. It's an error.
Formula error. Just looking for a formula there.
I'm just so detail oriented, I picked up on it.
Are, are you hashtagging, is that what you're doing?
Ken's hashtagging, I just picked up on it.
What that is, it's a spreadsheet and it goes into our accounting software and looks for account number and there's not, that account number hasn't been fully created yet, so I'm saying, I don't know what that number is, so.
There you go. Uh, new business. Fiscal year 2021 LBA budget final revision. Yeah, we went out of public hearing.
Go ahead and approve.
We need to approve the amended revision in LBA.
Okay, uh.
I'll go ahead and move to approve amended revision LBA budget fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Beck, it's second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we, now new business.
One more color.
I'm, good thing I'm colored, Brian.
These are all, these are backwards on my agenda. You gave us this and we just approved this.
Now you're going to approve the 22 one.
I think we just, didn't you just say 22?
No.
Because that's what's on my agenda.
She said 21.
Okay.
We did a public hearing.
Did a public hearing on 21 and.
So, last meeting you had a public hearing on 22, so that part's already over. And this is just adopting, if you can see, that, uh, spending the rest of the bond money in the next, uh, year as far as we can get through and continue to, uh, have construction. And also you'll see that there's interest and principal on this budget because those payments will start happening for that, so. We've already had the public hearing, so if there's any other questions on FY22's budget of the LBA, you can ask those questions now.
What's our interest rate again?
Uh, we issue three, 1.6 something, they're all right there, so.
That's awesome. So, are we doing B? Fiscal year 2021 LBA budget final revision?
No, we're doing C.
We're going to do C, final year 22.
On line, they were backwards, that's why I was saying.
All right, I entertain a motion to the 2022 LBA budget.
Motion to approve fiscal year 2022 LBA, LBA budget.
A motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion to go back into city council.
Second.
Uh, right, we got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discussion, there's no discussion?
On your computer, there is.
We have a.
We have a handful of items and, uh, we'll, we'll move through them as quickly as we can, but.
Sure.
We're not going to meet again between now and, we're only going to meet one more time, uh, between now and August about city business. So, there's a couple of timely issues that we need some feedback on and some direction from you, so. Let's see, I don't remember what's first, but we'll talk about code enforcement. So Vaughn, this is something that we've been working on quite a bit. Vaughn and, uh, Dave, a handful of off, our police, our folks from our public safety department. So Vaughn, you're going to talk about code enforcement and just want to general, uh, some general thoughts from you and, and general directions as we kind of narrow in on, on some possible changes we're, or some proposed changes we're considering. And then some, some transportation issues, there's a lot of transportation things that, that need to happen uh, in order to approve our network of roads. But some of them become kind of interesting changes and, and we want to get some feedback from you before we go too much further in, in how they're going. And then we'd like to talk a little bit about water. That's not specifically on the agenda, we're looking for you to take action, but we, I, we'd like to get a little bit of direction from you on some water things. And then we'll, we'll wrap it up, um, with some discussion on SFCN and the feasibility study, which you got some detail on last council meeting. So with that, we'll, we'll be done in 50 minutes for sure.
We can't go past midnight, though.
That's right. Just real quick.
I don't think we put a date, we just put after the meeting.
Real quick on the code enforcement issues, um, we've had, as Seth mentioned, we had a kind of a team of community development, police, a legal department, admin, building department. Have all been meeting to look at how we can improve code enforcement outcomes in the city. And one of the things we've come up with and was recommended by, um, Scott Gardner is that we do a, a tiered, uh, fine approach. So that with, they start out with a $500 fine for a violation. It could be nuisance, it could be weeds and junk, it could be a number of different things. But then if they cure that violation in 10 days, it, it drops all the way down to 100. So they have, they have this stick, but then they also have a carrot that they can shoot for. And so, and then it reduces, on a second violation, it goes from 500 to a 300 is, is they can only save $200. And if it's a third violation, they don't get to save any money at all. So, with that tiered approach, I, we're proposing some amendments to the ordinances to, to put that in there and then also to make that available to more different types of, of violations. We've had administrative processes that, in the city, but only in a few different areas of our code and we've, we've, the recommendation we're making is to apply them to other areas as well that makes sense, like zoning violations, nuisance, weeds and junk, um, building, building violations and so on. So, you'll see that coming forward in a, in a few weeks. Any questions about that?
Great.
Okay, we, could you go next? We got a grant through MAG to build a tunnel under US 6 and UDOT said that they would take it over for us. First thing they did is doubled the cost so that we couldn't afford it. And so, we started talking about it and we want to kind of leave that project and instead connect all these trails that we have in this area. We can, we have a trail down here and connect it, but there's also the kind of more of a long-term issue and that is this, this intersection might break down. And so, we just want to punt on this whole project for a couple of years and bring it up later once we've looked at it a lot more. But we don't want to lose the 1.7 million dollars that MAG has granted us. And so, there is another project on Center Street, close to where our future interchange is going to be and that's in conjunction with the high school. And that's a, a big roundabout right there. We feel like with the students, at least initially, but maybe ongoing, there'll, there'll be more accidents because of the roundabout, but there'll be very minor accidents. And maybe it's a good place to teach how to use roundabouts in general. And, and so with, if this was a big five lane, five lane, five lane, three lane, signalized intersection, uh, there would be a lot more injury accidents, possibly even a death accident because you're coming off the freeway eventually. And so, um, we feel like this is the right decision. Talked to the school district, they agreed and agreed to put $500,000 towards this intersection and the fourth west intersection, which will need a signal. This is a lot more than $500,000 though. And so what we would propose is take this 1.7 million dollars, go to MAG and say, let's move it over here. Does anyone have any problems with that?
So, the, the actual school will be there though, not the football field, right?
Yeah, so the school is being built right here, there's a lot of parking here and a, a bit of parking there. And so this becomes a pretty significant intersection. This will be a five lane arterial going all the way down past the sports park to Main Street. Uh, this is five lanes coming in, this will be five lanes going to the new interchange. This would be a very critical intersection, so.
Initially, when we approved the under Highway 6 tunnel, kids, well, they still do walk there, but is it next year? Those kids will now go to Mapleton Junior, is that right? I mean, so technically, you're really putting that in for just residents if you were to install that tunnel now, right?
Yeah, where the, the school district made this the boundary, so none of these people will go to this school. So it took away a lot of impetus for it.
It do- it does join our trail there though.
It does connect the trail.
Does connect the trail.
Take you down to Costco about.
Okay.
But it's expensive to be able to do that now, for children's safety.
I think it'd be better over here, the new roundabout on, by the high school there.
Our fourth, the, the Fourth North Roundabout that gets people on the other side now. I mean, that's a good trail to get people down, downtown. And really, when we're telling kids to do it, you can go down under Fourth North, come back up the trail to Center Street if you wanted to get to that gas station at the top of Center and stay on the trail and do it. You know, come past your old neighborhood, on a trail underneath Highway 6 and back up the gas station.
Yeah, you get a lot more exercise that way.
I guess if you want to stay active and healthy, you go that out.
Definitely would do that.
The 1430 each roundabout, I mean, that's just. How long you're going to be able to. I don't, I didn't, used to live there, but.
Issue we have here, there's a lot of issues here. One is, we want to connect all the trails, but if this is in the future, which I'm not ready to recommend yet, then you would build the trail connection a lot differently than if it was something else. And so, with, it needs to be investigated a lot. You know, one thought is push it over here into that area and not have to buy a house. You know, there's a lot of, lots moving parts here, so I think we should wait on that decision.
I think this is a good spot, especially when we get that new on-off ramp off I-15 right there.
Okay, right now we budget for the full cost of this. This would be a 1.7 million dollar infusion into the budget, which would be really nice if it could work. Okay, and then is, what we, we've gotten a lot of money and we've gotten a lot of comments about how much money we've gotten from MAG. And so, we've talked about it and what we'd like to do is only apply for one project. And that will be our, you know, our, would, would just say, hey, we're only going to apply for one project this year, but this is the one we think would be good.
It's like saying we're sorry for winning state.
This is a big project.
It's true, you guys kept applying, so.
Yeah. I think, I think if we did this, got it, it'd be a big win and the next time we could say, hey, we only applied for one last time and that's kind of psychologically we're trying to figure this.
Like when you say people have said things, who's, like.
The other cities and MAG and UDOT.
Well, if MAG says something, but other cities.
Well, and UDOT, UDOT's gotten a little vocal.
They're obviously investing in a good cause, so.
We agree. So, we got this project and that's being built right now and MAG's paying a lot of that. We, we, when we applied for this and got it, we said there would be three phases. And since then, this development has occurred. And so our thoughts are, what if we go back to MAG and say, we, we feel like this will be done by developers, we can get that done by developers. This would never be done by developers, so give us phase two and this would be our application this year. And this is a big one, this is very expensive. You have a signal here, you have five lanes going in here, you have the roundabout, so. It's kind of a big.
We're ready, you said apply for that one this year.
And that'd be our one project, yeah.
That's huge.
That's like top quadrant important.
Yeah. And. Yeah. And, and maybe even add this connection to Seventeen Hundred East so that you can come out there and go. So that's kind of our thoughts.
And shut the traffic down on one fifty.
This, this will positively impact Center Street and highway six, just giving the traffic on the highway six faster.
That whole, that, this whole area.
So that helps a lot of things. So we really want to get this project. And so if we say this is our only one, hopefully we get the votes, we can get it. Okay, the last thing, just really quick, is we've been pressuring UDOT a lot to get two left turn lanes coming from Third South onto Main Street. And they finally agreed to do it. They said they're going to give us quarter million dollars to do it. And we figured out a way to do it, but it would not give us the two lefts here. But we think that's fine. Right now, it doesn't warrant it. We're, you need three hundred peak trips and we're only at two hundred. So, and we think with a lot of the changes that we're proposing, we may never need it. And so it looks like we'll probably get these dual lefts from Third South on. And then you'd have only a single coming here. But we think that actually increases the phasing time here because this clears quicker and we think it'll work great. But that's just, that's coming.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
This is our keep Nick looking cool campaign, is what I call it. We're empowering Nick. So right now, there's a lot of buzz about the water situation in, in Utah. And we're not doing too bad. And we already talked about that. We're, we're, things are going pretty well here. But if we kind of thumb our nose at conservation, which we're not, my heavens, we've been doing it for years and years. But if we don't kind of try to ratchet things up, the fear is not being a team player with the rest of the state. And we want to do that. And so we've, we've kind of talked about how we can, we can still conserve water even more. And, and it's interesting, we already pretty much meet the state twenty thirty goal. This is the goal that they want the whole state to be at in twenty thirty, and, and we're there now. And so I think that's a huge talking point that we want to get out there. But we, we, we still think we can do more. And, and so here's some of the ideas that we came up with is, most people get paid twice a month. And so we thought maybe we could kind of encourage residents to skip a watering cycle every payday. So you'll save some green and you'll lose some green. And this is kind of our thoughts. But it's kind of easier whenever you get paid to, to skip a water, let, let your lawns get a little bit yellow, not. This isn't going to kill your lawn, it's just going to lose a little bit of yellow. The next thing that we talked about is we, we don't believe in water restrictions restricting days. We, we feel like that does not do conservation. It does help a lot of cities. If, if your system is underdesigned and you, your reservoirs are low, it's really hard to supply water to the whole city all at once. And so when you make the city stagger days, then you can supply half the city at once, one day, and then the other half another day. And so it works really well for systems that are underdesigned for lower supply, if that makes sense. But we don't have that problem. And, and so the reason why we don't want to do this is if, if I tell you you can only water two or three days a week, you water all day that day and you use a lot more water than you need to and, and, and really don't conserve water. You, you never miss a restricted day. But if, if we leave it open and we say, hey, look, just try to skip it once in a while, skip it every payday, but you can water the next day and there's no restrictions on that, then people consciously conserve water. And, and, and we found that to be true. And, and that's why we're, we have such a low water use in our city. And so I, I'm not criticizing water restrictions in other cities. I think they have a role, especially if your supply is down and your system can't deliver. But we, we don't think it's wise for conserving water. We think some of these other methods that we're proposing would do better that way, so.
With the governor's statement, is that, would there be a need to let our senate or representatives know why we are thinking that? Sort of, basically this short presentation to let them know we're, we're not discrediting what the governor's asking, but here's why it works for us and here's that, as you just said. Would there be a need, or could we do that to, to explain to them so that it, you know, it doesn't look as though we are thumbing our nose at the governor's requests, I guess, so to speak?
Yeah, I don't think he specifically requested us to do restrictions. He's, he's implemented some restrictions on, on the state facilities. But one of the things that he's dealing with with state facilities is they can't do some of these other things that we're doing because we meter and a lot of, a lot of facilities aren't metered. Most, most cities don't have meters on their outdoor water. So I think he's asked us to have some sort of a plan like this, and this, this is pretty comprehensive. This is pretty good. I think it'll meet the requirements. Okay, so one of the things that we do do that most cities can't do. Do you understand?
We do, do.
Is we have tiered rates. Now, tiered rates for pressurized irrigation, the state requires tiered rates for drinking water, right? Because everyone has meters under, they don't require tiered rates for outdoor water. And the reason is, is it's impossible if you don't have meters. But we do have tiered rates, even though it's not required for pressurized irrigation. And so one of the things that we're proposing is let's lower the threshold on the tier. And so to encourage people to use less water is we just lower it for this season from twenty-five thousand to twenty thousand gallons before you jump to the next tier. And then raise the tier rate from ninety-seven cents to a dollar twelve. That is a good message, I think, and it should help encourage conservation. In fact, I believe it's the only thing that encourages conservation is to charge for what you use. And that's why until metering becomes the mandate, it's going to be hard to conserve water. And, you know, overall in this state, very comprehensively, so anyway, that's.
Chris, on that, though, you said we're really doing fairly, well, really well. So why penalize our residents by charging them more? Mayor, did you slam your hand down?
I made that same point earlier today.
Wow. Great minds think alike. I would like to have an answer then. Don't just give it to me.
Since last twenty years, we've been conservating and been smart about water. Now we want to penalize our people for doing it.
And now we're just going to raise our rates and then take that money and put it where, like in the general fund? Because we just. Huh? This needs to be a broader discussion, possibly, since this is a bigger discussion.
So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't love it.
So.
We heard it from the mayor, but we just kind of.
Now we're listening. We did, we did hear about ducks today, so ducks are good, I guess.
Do they know?
So it's a good, it's a good question, Stacy. This definitely isn't being done to increase revenues. In fact, it doesn't increase revenues much at all.
It doesn't, but.
These rates are, these rates are actually low, still low. And so.
I think we could just educate the, the residents, continue on that path instead of raise their rates.
It's like a home that you have, it only raises a few bucks for like a house like mine on a third acre. So it's, it's not penalizing, but it is a message that you could get out. We are doubling the increase of the first tier. That, that encourages people to conserve, but in the end, they're, they might pay three or four extra dollars. So if they didn't change their, and so it's not, it gives you a good talking point, but it doesn't really hurt them that much financially, is, I guess.
Just a little bit.
A little bit.
Then they can't go by their speed.
When, 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 when we talk about, if, when, if we talk about this on a more detailed basis, I think it's important, I mean, Marlo gave that great presentation a couple of weeks ago. But we're, our city's doubled in size since we decided to lead out on water. Not only pressurized irrigation system, but meter it from the beginning. And that's twenty years ago now, and we were less than twenty thousand people. There's, there's a whole new city of people living here that just came in when that decision was already made. Thankfully, I mean, I don't know what the number would be now, but years ago, it was saving fifty something million to our city to make that decision. It was wide, you know, it was criticized pretty good in some circles. But, but now it's, you know, probably that double again, it's probably a hundred million that it saved us in, you know, money that, that equals water. So when we have that discussion of anything that has to do with tweaking that rate at all, it should be to help educate our relatively new residents, they're twenty years here, that, that, hey, this decision was made and it was made in states catching up to the decision that we made twenty years ago.
Do, yeah. So, so I'm thinking alongs of what the mayor's saying. Do, do they know, I mean, we're doing the Rancho meters. Racio.
We're, 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 the water department is continually fixing. We've got our loss of water down to like in the twelve percent versus twenty-five. And like the mayor says, we, we've been doing all this stuff. We're metering and continue. And yeah, we've put in all these things to continue this process. And then, and I guess, do they know that Spanish Fork has done all this and doing all this? And that continues regardless of what's happened in the last twenty years and since two thousand one. So they're saying that's when this drought supposedly started. And, and I get this because they see dollar and they see figure, and if we do that, then that's. But I kind of agree also with how, we've been trying to conserve why other cities, their PI is unlimited. Till it's gone, then they have to shut it off, but.
So I'm here and put this on the back shelf. Is that kind of?
I think so.
All right, we can do that.
Thank you.
The, the.
At least somebody agrees with me.
This is actually, everything you said is pretty easy to talk this state through. Nick's just getting a lot of pushback. Why don't we have restrictions in Spanish Fork? Were we thumbing our nose, you know? And so we want Nick to be able to, to really tell these residents, give the, yeah, we are team players. We are conserving. There, there's a big stage here.
And I think it's pretty cool to see some, some of the ag fields that are in city limits are on, are on pressurized irrigation. You can see, you can see places on the east side that are sprinkled, that were never sprinkled before. They were flood irrigated in ditches, and now they're sprinkled. And man, we ought to be highlighting. God, we're, we have a pressurized irrigation system where still these acres of farm fields that are in Spanish Fork get to be sprinkled and, and, and hook up to our PI system instead of flood irrigation. That's a lot, a lot of water. I mean, if you take the state's water usage, ninety percent of it is flood irrigation. Only ten percent's, you know, residential and commercial uses. And so even when we're conserving in our residential areas and commercial uses, it's only affecting ten percent of the water use in the state.
That's a really good talking point that we should, Nick, we should add that. Because there's also a large part that's doing drip irrigation. And so when you, when you sprinkle instead of flood irrigate, you save more than half the water. But the drip, it's seventy-five percent. And, and we have a lot of that going on. And we, we should probably really get that message out.
And we should let them know that, you know, we, you know, we understand we're in a drought. And so let's, let's do our part and conserve and do that. But I don't want to penalize us for being good stewards of our water for the past twenty years, you know? We've done well, and so let's, let's continue to do well, you know? And, and like I said, we can all cut back. I like the idea. Let's miss a pay, every paycheck. Let's cut back a little bit.
Well, we don't want you to miss your paycheck.
I never get a paycheck. So I'm never, I'm never going to turn my water on.
Could we have SFCN do a commercial and get that on Spanish Fork seventeen and on our social media outlets? Like maybe some just little mini snippets of different educational tools?
I think the only, the real, the only real education we could do probably shows effectively is Studio Chat.
All right.
I was going to suggest Chris go on Studio Chat.
I mean, have Marlo, because she's the expert on Studio Chat.
Oh, yes. Get her on there, you'll be great.
Here's a prime example. I get to know a person that lives in Lehigh. He said, or not Lehigh, Linden, he says, yeah, we have pressurized, you know, it's ten dollars. I pay ten dollars a month and I can water as much as I want because it's not metered. You know, and I do water as much. And I said, that's why you guys are running out of water. Exactly, so.
The other thing that the mayor brought up, which I think is really key, is when a developer comes in and he builds a house in Spanish Fork, we make them give us water. And when he gives us water, we say, that water, we want to know how much water that will provide us in a drought year, in a year like what we have now. And we say, you give us enough water that in a drought year, when we care, in a, in a wet year, we, we have so, we have water coming out of our ears, right? We don't need water in a wet year. But in a dry year, how much water will that give us? And that's how we value it. So when we have these drought years, that's the water we've collected and that's why we're doing. So that, that's a huge talking point that the mayor just pointed out. And, and because we've done that, we're, we're fine right now.
And it is an education of people think when we're growing and you grow a, you, you, a farm field turns into a new subdivision. Well, where do they get the water? How do they get the water? Well, you actually lose, you, you're using less water when you, when those homes are built than that farm field was using. Flood irrigate that farm field. And so, you know, and especially when we're asking, when we're getting water turned into us too for it. We're gaining more shares for those people to use.
No, you don't, you don't water where your house footprint is or your driveway or, you know, your backyard tennis courts or whatever you have, you know? No, you don't. Okay.
Nice, good.
Um, the next thing is water restrictions. And this is really, maybe I'll skip four and, and, and talk about it with six. But each person in the city is a stakeholder. Okay, actually, you did it right. Okay, so the, in Spanish Fork, we have this wind fan. All night long, you have these heavy gale force winds blowing in, in about a third or more of the city. And if you water into the wind like that, it evaporates the, the water, the sprinkled water six times faster than the sun if you water in the middle of the day. And so what we're worried about is public shaming of, oh, I, I went by this park or this school, Sierra Park or Sierra Bonita, and they were watering in the middle of the day. That city is really bad. And Nick gets that and gets beat up over it. When really, that's a lot more conservative than the people out there that are watering in the middle of the night. And so there's, there's. the middle of the night. And so there's, there's a lot of issues here that we're trying to get the message out. And so one of the things that, that we, we want to explain that and also say, hey, if you see something that's concerning to you, then go talk to that person or that school, or that city, or whatever, and, and, and let's solve it together. Let's not, let's not try to have a big public shaming, uh, situation on, on the internet. And so we, we really want to push that. Hey, this isn't about public shaming, this is about working together. And if you see something concerning, let's, maybe that person doesn't know that, that their, their sprinkler head is broke. They're at work every day when that comes on, you know? Let's just go talk to them and help them out. Don't take a picture of it, put it on Facebook and create an enemy. Let's, let's, let's just work together. And so we want that to be a big message. Um, and then, then the last thing is, is, you know, the governor encouraged us to pray for rain. We, we love that. We think that's, that's a great message. And so, um, let's, let's keep, let's reverberate that message. Any questions about any of this? This is kind of what we would say is our drought response type thing, minus, minus the tiered thing.
Thank you, Chris.
But maybe we'll talk about the tiers. We have tiers. How many cities have tiers?
Yeah.
Right?
None, 'cause they don't have meters.
Right.
They're fifteen minutes up.
Thanks, Chris, and, and, uh, Nick. We, we didn't, I don't think we touched on the parks and recreation side of this, the parks. To be, this idea of voluntary, we, we are not saying there's a restriction, and it's important that we always talk about what we have done, just like you said, to be where we are. We're in a great place. But we aren't on an island, we're all on this big water ship together, and so what can we do? This skip a watering every couple of weeks idea is, is just a voluntary thing. And, uh, if I stop, if I skip one watering at my house, it's probably three thousand gallons, and, and you multiply that by twelve thousand households twice in a month, I mean, that's the significant amount of water that we can save. So, and that, and that might make your yard a little bit green-yellow. Uh, it won't make it necessarily yellow-green, but that might make it a little green-yellow, and, and that's okay. We're gonna, we proposed doing some similar things, and Dale's had a little bit of time with his people to think about and talk about this, and they're gonna talk about a little bit more, but, but they're gonna look at their different parks and, and recommend some different spaces and areas where they can cut back on watering just the same. There are some places in our parks, however, that we can't change the watering. Those specific playing surfaces need to be watered, the, the, the grass has to stay a certain quality so that it can be played on, and it receives a lot of abuse, uh, from the playing surface, being a playing surface. So there are some spaces where we won't change the watering schedule, but we will in other places, and, and overall, that'll, that'll, uh, serve and conserve what we're trying to do. Great feedback on the prices, and we can adjust there. All right, let's talk SFCN. I sent out a, a note to you, uh, a week and a half ago, after our last council meeting work session, and looking for some follow-up from you. Brian has been a trooper, he's been here all night.
I just think, you know, if Mrs. Cruz gets offense after sitting here for three hours.
Yeah, but you're on the payroll, so it didn't matter.
We'll give you a France, Brian.
We'll give you a France. So anyways, that, we're looking for some thoughts and direction from you. We are not making any specific decisions, but however, we, we need to keep progressing towards some kind of decision, uh, po- a possible decision here, or do we put the project on hold? And the concept is simply, uh, how do we move for, or do we move forward, uh, hiring an architect to, to begin a, a design process? Um, and if we do that, we would look at doing, uh, this project through some sort of bond, which would be an enterprise revenue, uh, enterprise fund, revenue bond that the, uh, the utility would pay for itself. There are, there are funding mechanisms already in the rate structure that can, can handle this, so it wouldn't be a burden, uh, to the rate, wouldn't, I, I wouldn't expect it to, to cause any adjustment to our rates, uh, in, in SFCN, so we can continue to do what we do. Um, but I'm looking for some, we're looking for some direction from you as we, we move forward.
I, I won't apologize, because I read that, and it seems like the last two weeks, all of this stuff was coming in on my desk, and people calling me about other things, and I apologized not responding, but what you said just then, I'd, that, I, I like it being on that far, that west side of that corner.
This one here?
Yep.
Okay.
And I like the way you-
Outline it.
If he can pay for it out of his wallet, that's great.
All right.
I like that, too. If, if Brian can pay for it, we'll give it to him.
I'm sensing some nuance to what you're saying, but I'm, I'm not gonna explore that deeper. I'm just gonna-
I'm just trying to let Brian know that of all the kids, he pays for himself, right? It's like, some of the other kids are thirty-five and still live in our basement. Chris, you don't understand? Brian pays for himself.
Wow. Don't, wow.
Check out, was it eighteen? He moved out.
Ask Brian how much he owes me.
Wow, and stop it, stop it. It's like eleven o'clock at night. We don't have time for this.
We don't want our siblings to be fighting.
Now, kids.
I have a poem. I have a poem.
That was good.
TikTok, the game is locked.
I like the west side, too. I, I like that presentation, and I think we probably ought to move forward, you know, 'cause we're growing, and we need that, you know, the space. Yep, I like it over there.
Okay, we will-
Roundabout is.
We'll, we'll, we'll keep working on the roundabout concept as well. Um, I don't think that is the final design by any means, but we'll, we'll keep working on that, too, but, okay, we, uh, we'll begin the process of, of hiring an architect. We'll put out an RFP for that. Um, and it, it'll be a, a time before we're ready to build. I mean, we're, they, they outlined a timeframe. I think it was a little bit aggressive in the meeting that they, they sent us, but, um, that being said, we, we still get a sense of what it can be, so.
Can, I, I, and I don't know if I might have made this comment back when we first he approached this, uh, with the storage intaining. So, and I'm, I'm speaking from previous employment. With, with all the equipment, cards and technology, and the technology is advancing, with that storage, I hope we keep that. So a tendency, I come from a company where you tend to, because we had that technology, we keep that technology, and we keep all the cars, we keep them on the shelf, and we kept tons of it. And it sat there for years and years until finally somebody would say, hey, this is gone.
Got a dumpster, threw it away.
Yeah. Don't, as that, as we advance in technology, don't keep that, don't waste that space in foregone technology and stuff like that. And I know you have to keep some of it around because it stays there, but that takes up a lot of space when you move technologies and move to something new and better, and then you keep it on the shelf 'cause you think someday I'll use it. But, um, a, a new building is nice, and storage is nice, but we don't want, we want to utilize that to its, to its fullest.
Great advice. We can, we can certainly be pack rats from time to time, and, and technology. I, I still have a VCR. I have one more reason for the VCR, and as soon as I'm done with that project, the VCR's gone.
You have to keep that, 'cause all the John Wayne tapes are VHS.
Okay. You got that?
Yeah. Brian, you got what you need?
That's the direction we need it.
Okay. Gordo?
I think Kier should do it.
Kier.
We have closed session?
Yes.
Oh. Sweet.
I move we...
We don't know what to do, Brandon.
Yeah. I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation, land transaction, and personnel actions.
Got a motion.
Second.
By Councilman Kier, and second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for everyone that stayed for this marathon council meeting. It's over.